We will start work session and we'll go over just a couple of sections. So we'll start with the regular agenda, just to make sure everybody's good with that. You've had a chance to look at the May 12 regular session minutes and the May 12 work session minutes. Is there any comments or any discussions that anybody might have for that? Ms. Tran, any comments?
Yeah, the work session is for the last one.
Yeah, May 11.
Yeah, for the last one, it says July, the firework event is on July 26th instead of June 26th.
That's a rain date, I believe, right?
Well, there is a rain date in there, but the original date should say June 27.
Do we need to correct that?
No.
Okay. Was that in the regular section or the work section?
It's in the work section.
The work session?
I think it's on the work session.
It says July 11th. To make my question, the rain date is set for July 11th. Oh, yeah, at the top it says July 27th instead of June.
Okay, so what is that date, June what?
June 27th is the scheduled date and the rain date is July 11th, so that top line should say June, not July.
Good point, Ms. Dean. All right, any other questions? And we'll make that as part of the adjustment. Anything else you saw?
Uh, no.
Okay. Ms. Dean, any questions on either the regular session or the work session for May 11?
No, no questions.
Okay, Ms. Knight?
Yes, I'm on that.
Ms. Knight, any questions on the work session agendas for the prior meetings?
No, I'm good.
All right. So with the exception of the ones identified by Ms. Tran, we'll make that as part of the discussion. The meeting agenda, you've got the May 26 meeting agenda before you. Any questions or anything that is relevant to tonight's agenda? Ms. Tran? Okay, Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Dean?
Um, I do have a question regarding the contract, the commercial lease agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it says upstairs portion of the chapel.
That's correct.
And that includes everything that's upstairs? I can't remember exactly where I was up there.
Well.
If somebody can.
It's two levels, so what we're basically saying is part of the lease, the welcome to the upstairs portion of it. And remember, it's that small chapel in the middle, not the main one. And whatever is up there on that floor is what that includes approximately 10,800 square feet, give or take.
Well, the whole building is 10,800, so that would be approximately.
Fifty-four hundred. Okay, I'm sorry, stand corrected. So that would be half of the building.
Over three big. Councilwoman Dean, the whole building has a square foot of 10,800 feet, square feet, and they currently occupy and rent the upstairs. We're just continuing what they already use, which we would approximate is about 50% of that 10,800 square feet. We're not changing the space that they already rent, and we're just trying to define it descriptively.
Does that work for you?
Um, I think so. I noticed that in the contract it says that in maintenance, they cause or whatever, you know, the authorities cleaning and servicing of the bathrooms and all of that. So are we looking into how whether that's what they do that comes with this contract? We're not held liable for anything that's going, you know, how they also disิน and all of that. That's under their own jurisdiction, is that correct?
Under the indemnification clause that's in there, basically their original insurance, they name us as an additional insured, an indemnification, they're supposed to follow whatever rules and regulations there are. So if the state of Georgia has a rule or regulation, or the city of Mauro has a rule or regulation, they're responsible for following it.
Okay.
Good. Okay, come on. All right. Okay, just moving on, thanks, Dorothy. Number three, authorized selection of Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as a health insurance. And you're gonna see, we had several discussions about this and the budget savings that go with it, and the worksheet is available for you for review as well. And we'll be looking for authorization for that tonight. Any questions related to the health insurance provided for the city? Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Knight? Ms. Dean?
No questions. I'm good with it.
Okay. Item four, you know, where we get into authorization to execute the contract with triscretes. This is the Phase Three of Jester's Creek. We've had discussions about this, and this gives us the authorization to execute it and all relevant documents that were necessary for it for discussion, inspection, construction administration. Any questions related to item four? Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Item five, this is related to, it's actually a requirement as part of the storm water management rules that were put in place almost 10 years ago. And this is a report that is actually created by Clayton County Water Authority, and each one of the municipalities, including Clayton County, were a participant in that. Some of that information does come from us, but the vast majority of it comes from the water authority. And we're asking for the ability to authorize us to sign it. They still have to give me a report, and once that report is received, because the document I'm signing says I have seen it, once they've given it to me, then we'll sign it. But it is all related to water quality issues. If you read your taxes, you're gonna see a storm water management fee. And to be honest, they're the experts. We would almost have no idea what we're looking at, with the exception of having confidence in the realization, water authority of Clayton County is phenomenal, and the people that were recommending it to us are some of the same. What's his title?
Mark Whitely?
Yeah.
Well, he's the engineer that did the construction administration for our repair of the Jester's Creek Base Two. We have hired him to do construction administration for the Jester's Creek.
But he's an engineer.
He's an engineer, but I just want to be clear, he's not charging us for this service. This is some work he does for us.
Right, but he's an engineer, so you actually do have somebody who knows what they're supposed to be looking at.
Yeah.
Looking at it.
And he does it for other cities, so he offered to do it for us as an extension.
Okay. Any questions related to item number five? Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Knight? Ms. Dean?
No questions.
No question. Item six is related to what we just talked about a minute ago in terms of the contract with the Reynolds Road property, and that's just to continue a one-year lease at $2,000 a month. We talked about that before. This is just the verbiage that goes with it, the contract. Any issues related to that? Ms. Tran?
Yes, the security deposit. We don't take any security deposits for this contract.
They're already in the building now.
Okay.
Was there an existing security deposit?
No, and just what we're gonna recommend, what I'm gonna recommend to the council is that you authorize Mayor Lampold to negotiate and execute, and that way if there are little questions come up that you all want to resolve differently, he can still, you know, fine-tune the lease and doesn't have to come back to vote for execution. So to that point, if that's something you all want to consider putting in there, you could even do it after tonight's vote, as long as he's been given the authority to negotiate and execute.
Well, and because they're already in there, and we're asking for, you know, an insurance policy, we'll put those along those lines. Is that a maximum requirement for you, Ms. Tran, or are you good with it?
No, just in case at some point during the contract, they are not on time on their payment, then we have something there, just in case.
We didn't have a security deposit, because if you remember, the lease already existed, that would just.
Well, nobody there has personal guarantees.
Yeah.
And for the most part, even if they left, you know, we'd rather just have somebody in the building than not. They're not gonna be high-risk, Ms. Van, I mean, just to be honest.
Okay.
Ms. Knight, any questions?
My preference would be for the council to review any changes, so if we are in agreement that we're gonna move forward, then let's just approve to execute the contract, but if there's a negotiation or changes, my preference again would be to notify the council in advance of execution of what those changes are for transparency.
That's fine. We can just do execute.
Did you find that, you were looking for the indemnification? Did you see it?
The indemnification's written in the contract.
All right, well, that's fine. I'm out.
That's fine, because for the most part, the way it's written is certainly a lot better than what we got now, so I don't have a problem with that. Ms. Knight, or Ms. Dean, questions?
Yeah, I don't think that we've had any problems with them causing any damages or not getting the rent on time, I don't think. Is that correct?
I will say that that is not entirely correct, because in the beginning, there was some confusion on their part as to who they were supposed to pay, because remember, it was a lease that existed with the church?
Yeah.
And then there was also some utility bills that they changed their address and didn't notify us, but for the most part, I am comfortable with their contact with us and how they maintain their payments. But, you know, except for those two little missteps.
Okay.
All right, come on.
If we're bad, I'm fine with it.
Okay, and that's pretty much the agenda for the regular section, and we'll pick that up at 7:30. Going over into the work session agenda for this evening, what we'll start, of course, the first one was a note that we already talked about, which was basically the annual report, storm water service. Basically, once you started paying that fee, all of the water that runs off of the parking lot that goes into these sediment ponds becomes partially responsible by Clayton County to maintain, and that's why they're so hard to put in place and a lot of engineering and different things like that. So the storm water part was mandated by the state in terms of being able to make that happen, so we don't have a lot of options. It would be impossible, and financially impossible for us to do our own, because it's not what we do. But if anybody wants to have, you know, good discussions, once we've got a public works director, we can have him come in front of us and talk about storm water management and what that means as a city, and what that means for each one of these detention ponds, if you want to do that. Okay? Sanitation provider selection discussion. We've been talking about sanitation a little while. We had some additional discussions the last time we met as to whether, you know, if we took out yard waste, what would that do to our pricing? And those numbers came back, you know, pretty nice. You want to go over that, Sylvia?
Yeah, I mean, if you'll notice the summary that you were given during the last meeting, I've just tacked on the garbage only prices for the three providers at the bottom of their respective sections. You know, obviously, going over at Republic, once a week, backdoor trash only, no yard waste, no bulk, no recycling. Per home is 22.05 for 95 gallons. If you wanted to do twice a week, it would be 40.86. And I just want to remind us that the big difference to me between Republic and say Waste Pro and Advanced or Latham is that their containers max at 95, and that's what they're contracting for, it's not 150 like what we're used to. If you look at Waste Pro, you can see their once-a-week backdoor garbage only, for up to 150 gallons is 14.19. Twice a week is 23.19. And we had some clarity that if, when, if a customer wants to have double pickup on the same day as their regularly scheduled trash, it wouldn't necessarily be as much as if I wanted an a la carte pickup on the day that wasn't my day. Does that make sense? So I just, I know there are sort of nuances, but I just want to make sure we're capturing them all. And then if we look at, in fact, if you see that once in a while at the bottom for Waste Pro is $2.50 extra per bag, but, and they did it both ways. Once was like 150 additional gallons, or if you just wanted a couple of extra bags. So just point that out, and then if you look at Advanced and Latham, they're at the bottom of garbage only. Their rate for backdoor garbage pickup once a week is 13.85 per month in addition. And then there's some more description there that if every now and then they want an additional 150 gallons, the customer could pay $12.50 for an additional 150 gallons. Again, I think that's if it's on the same day, because the big expense is calling people off their route to come and pick things up that weren't scheduled.
Any additional questions in relation to the proposals and the changes that reflect? Ms. Tran? We can't hear you, Van.
No further questions on those. Just one concern that I have is that whoever we choose to, we need to make sure their credential checks and make sure we would get the provider who can do what they decide to calculate.
Okay.
Do what they agree to calculate.
Agreed. Ms. Knight?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. When they say that you call for additional pickup, the customer is calling who?
Well, at least the city of Mauro still handles the customer service. I mean, I don't think that was your plan to change that, so you would call us and we would call them.
And that way we could.
Additional.
Yeah, because that way there's a price that goes with it.
Yeah, because your regular pickup is gonna be on a schedule that happens every week, so obviously you'd call us if there was a missed pickup or something like that, but for any specialized pickup that isn't on a normal schedule, you would schedule that through the city.
Okay. So now, define every now and then. What does that mean when we say that? What are we saying to that customer?
Well, it won't be weekly, but to your point, we could define that contractually. Is it once a month only? If it gets more than once a month, they have to schedule an additional pickup? And you'll see that, like, in some instances, it would be cost prohibitive to call for the a la carte service versus adding another pickup, but, you know, we do want to understand that, say, with Waste Pro, I think it was, is that if every customer gets it or doesn't get it, so if you wanted an additional pickup, and they're here if you want to ask them specifically, if you wanted additional pickup and it wasn't on your day, they can't, they're not gonna come back with, you know, for only some, right? So, you know, I mean, yeah, there is no definition specifically, so it would be up to the council to define what does every now and then mean, every once in a while? How do you want to define it? Once a month? Because if it's once a week, that's not every now and then. Is it three times a year?
Right.
But just remember, you know, that to everything we add, we just have to make sure we're tracking it.
Right, right. Well, I think we need to define that, because that can create an issue, because every now and then might be different for everybody, so we need to make it, you know, more uniform to what we already have, for everybody.
Oh, well, do I hear you saying you don't want every now and then to be an option for customers?
She just wants something that's not.
Oh, you want it?
Pay isn't a term.
Okay, okay. So once a quarter?
Right.
Mayor, I mean, I mean, I wouldn't, unless we're asking from the audience, I wouldn't know how to define that specifically.
Well, based on what's being put out, what we see out in the community, you know, I think, I mean, if anyone has something to do with every month, bulk items.
Yeah, you see, remember, Councilwoman, we're not talking about bulk items. They're not coming for your bulk.
This is only garbage.
That's all, the bulk items are coming out of the contract, that's going to Public Works. So unless you're seeing the cans at their back door or their side door, you're not seeing this. This is not what they pulled to the street.
Okay. Well, that brings me to my other question, then. Okay, so I think we need to define every now and then, as far as that other pickup, you know, whatever it is. And the other thing is the bulk for Public Works. How are we gonna deal with that? Have we decided, or do we have the transportation and the bodies to do that service?
And or equipment. I mean, being reasonable considering what bulk means to some. I mean, I live in a neighborhood where, you know, bulk is out every week for certain, for some neighbors. We have to understand that there is going to be a need for equipment to handle bulk.
Somewhere in our budget, we should have gotten what each one of the Public Works Department's equipment now, right? We know they have at least a truck, and we know that they have people, and we know that they have done this before. So in terms of specialized people or specialized equipment, if they didn't need it 20 years ago, you know, somebody would have to give me a good reason as to why they can't do it today. I do know that in the budget projections, you know, we already have a number that's in there for the dumping fees and different things along those lines. That's a question. But it's separate. The city's responsible for the bulk, the garbage company's responsible for garbage, and that's what's getting you here right now.
So are we gonna decide at a later date about bulk pickup, or?
No, I mean, at this point, because the garbage company wouldn't pick it up, that becomes us.
Right, okay. So what are we gonna do in the meantime about bulk services? What are we gonna put out there to the public?
Once we.
Hold on, hold until further notice?
No, 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 because remember, this contract, the current contract is good up until October, so we have time to initiate that. Hopefully by then we'll have a public works director. Hopefully by then we can have some route system back in place, where it used to be, if you put something out on the curb, your day for your particular subdivision might be Friday. Every Friday you put your stuff out there. The other half of the city might put theirs out on Thursday. We want some input back from the public works director as to what makes sense. Is the city, you know, divided into threes, is it divided into fours? You know, what makes sense for how he sets up his route system, or they set up their route system. But they used to have a route system, and we know it worked, and it worked for decades. So in this particular case, all we're saying is, it's not part of the garbage contract. We're contracting for garbage service with the garbage company, and they're offering some pretty competitive rates to produce that.
Okay, so we can have a discussion about bulk at another time. I am concerned about the staff, and I'd like to have some in-depth discussion about that at a later time.
Sure.
Back to my point of if there's a need for specialized equipment considering the staff.
Well, that might be up for interpretation. You'll have a budget presented to you soon, hopefully, and from that standpoint, if you want to make a modification, you know, that'll be up to you. I'd still like to wait until I have a public works director to be able to figure out what's going on, because, you know, quite honestly, you might not be getting the results of what you should already be expecting in the first place. I don't know the reasons why, but let's have somebody who does that stuff for a living tell us what their ideas are. We know the city has successfully done it in the past, and we know the type of equipment that they've done it with in the past still exists. So if someone's saying I need a new type of equipment based on what, that's a totally different animal. But don't confuse.
So will the public works director provide that information?
Yep, sure can. Other questions, Dorothy?
That's it.
Okay, come on.
No questions.
One other comment is that I spoke about the street maintenance agreement, a report, rather.
On the trucks?
That we get that so that we know that they're maintaining the lease because of, you know, the fluids that.
I think Sylvia took notes last time. We'll have that in the contract, irrespective of which company you choose, we'll have that in the contract that they gotta maintain their equipment. That's expected, I think, anyway.
Right, right. It just happens, you know, periodically enough. I understand, like.
Totally understand. You end up with that stuff in the middle of your driveway, you're not gonna be happy to discuss all that, so I get it. Questions I would have would be, you know, some of the contract exclusions from the last time versus what the law exclusion allowed. In other words, several members of Mauro were never required to use our service, even though the city cadres always required them to use our service. So there was two of the condominiums, did we talk with North Ridge, did we talk with Woodstone? And, because I don't see that in here, we got to have that to be inclusive on this contract.
Yeah, but again, to your point, that's contract conversation, and the providers have asked a series of questions back and haven't had a chance to get them what they're needing in terms of the complete information. We do know that Oxford Town Homes and now Bloom, once Mauro College Apartment, they're already in a contract. I don't see that North Ridge was ever in a contract, but I could be wrong. I'm just saying I haven't been able to dig that up yet. Woodstone, we just allowed them to go under contract separately, like, in 2016, it's been very recent. They have a year left on their contract, so, you know, they have a different provider. But, you know, what we'll have to do is talk to the current providers that we're choosing from to decide, okay, what is Woodstone's price gonna be? Because their gallon, they may not can accommodate 150 gallons, they may only accommodate 90 gallons. So should it be the same price? I mean, obviously, if you're taking, if you're taking the contract down to garbage only, then we don't have to worry about bulk and yard waste anymore, as being difficult to contract with Woodstone, for example, because they don't have bulk and yard waste, whereas every other customer did.
Yeah, and technically also picking up front door, because they basically throw their garbage to the curb.
That's North Ridge.
And then the other ones at rear out. But at least from the standpoint, before we get into a contract, we like to make some pricing, you know, so that we got pricing from them available, so we know what they're gonna charge them to do that service, whichever method they choose to deliver it. We just know that, and even if the person, even if the company still has a year left on it, I wouldn't recommend picking a fight over that year, just so, because we could, because we legally had the exclusion in this city for decades. But I wouldn't, you know, rather than get into those contracts, we just let them know you don't have a right to do that. You've never had a right to do that. And as that contract expires, that way the new contractor that we're choosing understands what his responsibilities or their responsibilities are. And as that contract expires, that way the, the new contractor that we're choosing understands what his responsibilities or their responsibilities are, and the other group, you know, understands that it's time to, to exit the room.
Yeah, and then like for Northridge, it, it's a matter of, will they pick it up in the same style? Like, are they gonna put it on the curb and, and then we'll pick it up from the curb side, or are we trying to-
I wouldn't change the method to start with. I would just say, you know, we, we're doing that. I assume you guys can do that the same way, right? It, it's easier.
We don't change it.
Yeah. So, and then the, the same thing for Woodstone. It's, you know, you just run down through the alley and you're picking it up, so this, just to make it as reasonable as possible. And, and, you know, and then the last one would be Southlake Mall. You know, they operate a compacter system, which is kind of unique to everybody. That can get a little dicey. Um, you know, and I'm not sure what their total thing is, but, you know, they're, they're not, you know, excluded either. We just have to come up with some terms that make sense, and then, you know, I, I assume y'all can deliver that type of service. And I don't know what the, the numbers are, and-
Well, I don't think, uh, any of the providers, all of them can provide it. It's just the details that we're gonna have to work out. And, and like I said, we just, I haven't been able to turn around and give them that information.
Well, because we're, we're, you know, we've seen enough information where, you know, shortly, we want to make a decision so that we can start negotiating a contract. Does that make sense? While we still got time left.
But, and, and certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, there are going to be terms for, for those, just the Woodstone, Northridge, and the mall, that we're gonna have to work out. But I don't feel they're relying on, on the selection, because your primary driver was residential issues, right?
I, I agree. But remember, we also provide commercial service, right? We wanna make sure that they're being treated fair. And that the other people don't think that they're not included in this, and I don't want a scenario where we award a contract to somebody without some type of pricing to back it up, um, so we know what they're gonna be. In other words, if, if Northridge is gonna play double the amount of garbage, I'm, I'm not saying that for truth, but, you know, I'm just saying I want some number, uh, before we get there. If they deliver exactly the same methodology, they can, assuming they can.
Well, other than just Q and A with some of the residents, until the HOA gets back with us, we're not gonna know. I mean, I'm not gonna have an official way to tell you other than, hey, how much do you think you pay, and they're gonna tell me. Because the HOA-
But they're gonna be able to tell you what they can pick it up for.
I'm talking about what they pay for it versus what they would charge for it. What Northridge currently pays, what they might currently, what they would charge. And, you know, it's just, it's not as, it's not as easy to get information from Northridge as it once was. But, you know, we may have, we may have ways of making them talk.
Everybody else has ways. Um, you know, the idea is be as polite as long as you can, and, you know.
Well, they've gotten some new board members recently that are, um, Greg, who often attend council meetings, are much more just, they, they just didn't put their units for rent and move away and just collect the rent. They're actually living there. So, we are seeing some improvement.
Let's, let's try, let's, let's, let's strive to achieve all of our answers, so we can make a decision at the next council meeting. Does that work? If we have to plug into the next one, that's fine, but, you know, because we're close. We gotta be close, right? Does everybody get with that?
Um, God, I have a question here with Northridge. Um, will we be able to get that information, considering that they, they, they pay association dues, and that has to be settled or resolved or something, before they can give us an answer?
Now, don't, don't confuse what their HOA has as, as a, as a, a challenge. You know, the, the city has always had the legal right to, to be able to do this. It, it's been a legal right for a long time. I doubt seriously the dollar numbers are gonna be higher, um, unless they're just putting it in the back of a pickup truck. But, you know, they have a responsibility as an HOA aboard, uh, to follow the rules, just like you do, you know. And, you know, that, that's part of business. We're just letting them know upfront that, you know, while we're still in this, let's, let's, let's give them a chance to chime in. What, what's not gonna be negotiable is the contractor we choose. That's the contractor they will have. How they deliver the service, I think that could be entirely different. There were some options over at Northridge years ago, where they could get into a, a, a container scenario, um, and then the idea behind that was they, they passed, because they couldn't find any physical location to actually put, so a lot of condos, you'd see people put garbage in a car and then take it to the, to a dumpster, and they would do it that way. You know, unless they wanted to change how they delivered it, in which case then they would go into a commercial garbage rate, and they could solve that one, that's what they'd achieve. But if they're gonna pick it up severely, the least inconvenienced to them, then it's gonna be a traditional method. But they don't, they don't have an opt-out option, and they never have. In 30 years, they haven't had it. But they're also not using it, which is ironic. Any other questions? Okay. Then, uh, this one's kind of a new one in terms of work session. Uh, we are, we're working on, I mean, obviously, anybody who's been paying attention to the budget or anything that's happening on a national basis, or Georgia basis, um, you know, our businesses are in trouble. You know, our revenue coming in as a city is still, Angela, you can answer this question for me, but pretty much about 80% of all the money we raise is all from the business community.
Yes.
There's a very small amount that's residential. So, when, when we don't engage our business community, or our business community is not doing well, you can always reach back out there and, you know, charge Mr. Collins another $1,000 a year. He'd be happy to pay it. But that, that's not how this city has been structured. It's always been structured where your business community and, 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 and the dollar values for those buildings pays the vast majority of the City of Morrow. When you start to look at our current issues, we, we have to make some changes. And we have to promote our businesses, and, and there are ways to do that, that, you know, we didn't just invent. And, and to do it without, you know, causing challenges to your community. In other words, a little bit of a trade. So, along the Southlake Mall, we are actively working, obviously, to get those tree line cleared up. We're, we're not being very successful so far, but it's not from a lack of trying. And we have a choice of, and this is really what this amounts to, is we own property on both sides. Digital marketing, billboards, whatever you want to call them, work. We already have a number of them on I-75. We have a number of them on our properties. We're the largest land owner by linear footage on I-75. If you take into consideration all of our properties, okay? So, we want you to consider issuing two permits to the city itself. And the idea would be, we work with a billboard company, a digital billboard company, so that instead of like the one that we have right now, which is static, right, it's just a wallpapered out there, we don't get a lot of ability to change, which makes that very expensive, versus an independent business who might be able to buy a couple of minutes. You know, so maybe on the way home tonight, somebody's buying a 30-second slot or a 10-second slot, but there might be 10 people on that slot as it turns around. That makes it a little bit cheaper for you to be able to buy it. So, if we can negotiate and, and get those permits, then what we negotiate is not so much a dollar value. We negotiate the ability to promote Morrow's businesses on those billboards, okay?
But I, I do want to interject that the city itself cannot advertise for itself. When you are the property owner, you cannot advertise on the billboard. But, yes, any of our businesses could, and we're looking at the law now, by we, I mean, the billboard company, because if we have an event, uh, you know, does that count as advertising for ourselves, or is that more like a public service announcement? So, just to be clear, we can't, we can't advertise the City of Morrow if we're contracting for the billboard on property that we own.
But, but what we want is not so much to promote Morrow as an aim.
Businesses.
We want to promote the businesses. A reason for you to stop, you're, you're probably not stopping because of Morrow, uh, no more than we'd stop because of Atlanta. We, we want to stop for, you know, a good restaurant, a hotel. Things that put money back in our piggy bank, things that allow us to promote opportunities that are here. Unique businesses, regular businesses, whatever we have. And only doing it on a corridor that's less offensive. In other words, the vast majority of people driving by this city are driving down I-75 every single day. Gives you the highest view corridor, versus, say, giving up a billboard on, on 54 Highway in, in front of Wendy's. First, that's visually obtrusive. There's not any there. We haven't given up that ground, and there's no reason to, right? We can stay very uniform in terms of our sign company. On I-75, we can't say that. You know, we've given it up, not necessarily because we wanted to in some cases, but because we've lost several court cases. So, they're there. Why would we not take advantage of the opportunity to allow our businesses the opportunity to, to get a cost-effective marketing solution? So, the idea is get the permits, right? We're gonna, we, we go through planning and zoning, whatever's necessary. We would start on the one on I-75, on, on the Southlake side, and there are several reasons for that. One is, not only would we be able to have the billboard there, but in the event we're not successful in able, in getting local legislation or local players to allow us, GDOT, to allow us to cut those trees down, once that billboard has been up five years, existing Georgia law allows whoever owns that billboard to, to cut that line of sight. There's a cost to it, right? You have to pay for the linear footage of Georgia's trees or whatever. But the point being is, you could, you could literally make a date certain that says, within five years, those things are coming down, no matter what. Now, you don't get to cut everything you see. There's a linear footage limit. But it does give you the ability, when you're building things or trying to attract business, to say, this will happen. Right now, we're saying, we want it to happen. We'd like it to happen. We wanted it to happen for a decade. It hasn't happened. So, as a backup plan, not only are we gonna be able to advertise businesses in the city, but the backup plan is, we're gonna open up that view corridor at Southlake Mall, no matter what, at least on that side. Then on the other side, you know, you're just picking that linear section up and just saying, to negotiate with a billboard company, if we just put up one digital billboard, that, that, that's gonna be so expensive, they're not gonna really give you a heck of a deal. If we can give them the ability to have two, now we've got something to negotiate with, where we can get some additional time. No one's gonna see it on the back of that, you know, 30-acre track anyway. Uh, no more than they see the cell tower that's back there that most people don't even know exists, okay? So, if you don't see the cell tower, you know, you're not gonna pay that much attention to the billboard. So, that's the concept behind it, and then we're looking for some input as to what your thoughts are. So, um, Ms. Tran, any thoughts?
I like the idea of the helping promoting local businesses. So what would be the content sold on the billboard?
You can't control business content, okay? So, that would be whatever a normal content would be. So if you drove down I-75 and you saw somebody advertising for a hotel, or Harley-Davidson, or whatever else, but you can't control the content with the exception of the fact that they can't write four-letter words and, you know, vulgar and disgusting things that are already outlined by Georgia law. So, but everything else, fair game. Yeah, the issue's the, the structure, not content.
So we're paying the, for the cost of billboard and allowing local businesses to participate in promoting their businesses? Is that what I heard?
No, ma'am. What we would do is, we own the property, and we will own the, the permit. We will negotiate with the sign company, whichever sign company that may be, to actually build the structure. And then they get the additional marketing dollars from the time period we're not using. Does that make sense? So, a reasonable point, we're gonna be one of the players on the 10 spends, but, but we're not going to, you know, control all of the content. That's where they'll make their money. So, instead of them paying us a certain amount of money per month to, to have the right for the billboard. And, and in this case, it's twofold. It's, it's very difficult to get one of these permits. So, you, you have a little bit of a monopoly, right? So even if you could get one, then they still would pay the landowner a certain amount of money per month. We don't want their money. We want the ability to promote our local businesses.
Thank you.
Ms. Knight, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Dean?
Uh, so what are we talking about, initial investment from the city to, to get permits? And what are we, are we looking at spending, you said it's gonna cost some money?
Uh, well, in this case, the-
How much is it?
In this case, the actual getting the permits and different things like that is now. What we're looking for is that the city fills out its own permits. We still go through the same process. We take it to the Planning and Zoning Board. You know, they're gonna approve something of a certain height that you can see, um, all of the normal things, and it comes right back to the exact same city council, you know, but the point being, it doesn't make us, it doesn't make any sense for the staff to go through that effort if at the end of the day, the city council's not gonna approve it. So, we need to be able to go, we want a digital site on, on both sides if we can get it, and we want to, to, to be able to do that. But just like anything else, you have to start with an idea. Think we've tried that, and before we go too much further, we want to be able to ask for your support, because then we're gonna give it to the staff, and then the staff's gonna walk it through. That, that would have a normal cost to the private sector, but those people are already here. You know, then it's just a matter of working with GDOT. There's a certain linear footage that they can work with to make sure that it's doable, and that the, the site possibly-
That's, that's where you said, that's where, is that where you said there was gonna be some cost to the city of that, you know, linear footage?
Your only cost would, no, I, I, I don't think so. I, I think that would still be bore by the, um, the billboard company. Including geotechnical, any type of work bringing power out there, that's all on them. What we're bringing is the ownership of the property and, and the actual permit. We will, we would own the right to have two billboards. There, there's some rules that go with that. And, you know, before we sign off on anything, obviously, this comes from the city council several times. But in the initial phase, the idea is, do you like the idea? We have a lot of footwork to do to get the idea to some type of fruition. And we have to have a billboard company, or a series of billboard companies, hopefully people competing to take the opportunity, because that'll give us a better deal. That's, that's in a, in a, in a future time period. But if you will endorse the idea, then we will instruct the staff to try to take it to the next level. And that's working with GDOT to be able to get the right for the permits. Does that work?
Um, yeah, I'm only looking at, you know, as you stated, it's gonna be, um, really tight going forward, and, um, if this is going to cost us, you know, um, circumstances or anything like that, we need to be as transparent about it and upfront with everything, so that we know everything.
I agree, and, and-
About-
I agree, and, and, and we are. We'll, we'll, everything that comes through there, we'll, we'll make sure, not only that you're aware of it, but that you approve it. But just, just that, and having had a little bit of discussions with the budget, I, I'm gonna say something, but then walk it through for just a minute. With the exception of the, the current, um, virus budget problem, if, if we had not had that issue, then in the event there was an expenditure related to that, that could have been covered under, um, especially if you're advertising hotels and things like that, that could have been covered under a hotel motel type of idea.
Yeah.
Right? But because of some things we're having discussions with about an economic development person, rather than funding that 100% out of the general fund, that we, we just didn't have the resources to pull that off. So we're pulling some of those resources for that person out of that fund. So, I don't want to double dip or get you confused. I'm just saying, it's, it's an idea. We start with the idea. If we like the idea, we take it to the next level. Okay?
All right, so let me, let me ask, because, you know, we're speaking on transparency. So at this point in time, the only information that has been provided to the council is this map.
Yes.
Yes, because, and this is the same, this is the image I shared with the billboard company. And, and we are scheduling a call, it's supposed to be tomorrow, actually, where we can talk to, not the salesperson, Laura, but their, their guy on staff, I think his name is Brian. So, a lot of the questions that we're even asking, like, the line of sight, how long it could be, you know, who, how expensive is the, is there a permit at the state? How expensive is it? What, how much time does it take to get it? We've not had any of those discussions with a billboard company yet. But through the mayor's point, I think, if, if I'm not wrong, I, if everybody hates it, I don't want to spend the time chasing it. So, if everybody thinks I need to hear more, then let's go find out more.
And, and there'll be lots of discussions. It's gotta go through planning and zoning. It's gotta make it through our own staff, uh, before we get there. So this is not something that's gonna happen in a day. And even if you can get all the permits and you can get the billboard company, they won't build it that fast. So, we, we'd be lucky if everything went our way to have it this time next year, to be honest.
Yeah, probably longer.
Yes.
It's a, it's a huge concern.
It takes a minute.
Yeah.
But it happens. But if you don't, if you don't start laying the groundwork today, it'll never happen, you know. And if, if we're not successful in opening up that view corridor, every year we wait, it's just, you know, drive by them, you can't even see Southlake Mall today. I mean, that's, we, we've got huge problems with Southlake Mall. Do not underestimate what is happening. Do not underestimate what is happening.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I like the idea.
So, so, so there's where we are. Next item, we've got about another 10 minutes before the council meeting starts. This one is Skipley. And, we gotta walk back a little bit of, of some discussions. When we were having wonderful discussions about the tourist center, and we were talking about potentially an application, where somebody would create a mobile app. So, if you were driving up and down I-75, something that was related to the city, where we would be able to download an app on City of Mora, and we'd be able to help anyone who was trying to come off the interstate to, to be able to find a hotel, find a restaurant, or other types of things. So, that would mean, not only are you doing this there, but now, let's assume for a minute, you're actually at the Drury Inn, for an example. And, everyone else could put ourselves in, in the same spot, whether you're in Savannah, or whether you're at the beach. And you wanna kinda know what's local and where can I eat. And, and usually they have a book thrown on a table somewhere, but if you don't have access to that, you got your phone, you're doing Yelp or something. But if you download that app, that app is gonna be designed to be able to help us, again, advertise our businesses, advertise hotels, advertise things along those lines. And, and these, the funding for this specifically would come out of that fund. Is that, did that correct, Sylvia?
Uh, which part?
This would be the, what do we call that?
Product development.
Product development. So, this is where we have a basic scope of work, right? The, the, you could start with a number of different ideas, but you can get the idea of the app. This is a scope of work that kinda lays out milestones. And it says, okay, this is what your app might look like. He's obviously not getting paid for the entire contract until he meets each milestone. So, like, the first milestone would be designed, is this, you know, here's my, here's my prototype, and, you know, what do you think? So, you're getting some approval for what that does and the function keys that go with it. That there is some potential, this kind of a freebie service, where there are some services that a Mora resident could use it and maybe identify a pothole, or maybe identify a need for a street light or something like that. Those are to be determined. But, those additional fees, think of it as we'd get the ability, but it would be a, it'd be a marketing tool, paid for by marketing dollars, and that's not general fund money. So, the, the statement of work that you have there, this gentleman is out of Georgia Tech. They, they have a, a prototype, you know, not something, you know, in other words, they can show you they've got a functioning piece of the software to make it work. So, again, we look at a product where we talked about it once ago. We, we now have an individual who's capable of at least promoting that product, maybe delivering that product. We have a price, an a la carte menu to, to, to get us there. And then, we have some, a much smaller amount of money for maintaining it on an annual basis. This is where we have good discussions. And, and you say, all right, before it was an idea, now the idea has some paperwork to it. So, we're looking for feedback. And, any questions, Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
So, this, this company is the only company being presented that has the ability to work on this type of service. You know, being on the council previously, we've had discussions about apps. Sylvia and I have had discussions about apps in the past. But, you know, I'm, I'm curious, this is the only, only company that's being presented to us with a, with a price to provide this service?
It is, as of this time. Now, it's not up for approval. The idea is, here's, here's a proposal based on what we have. If you want to look for additional companies, then that's something you just recommended to the city manager and tell her to find some more?
I think we should.
And additionally, I would, I would encourage the council to look at the, the statement of work, because, say, if, if this company has outlined the, you know, what will be delivered on the app, this, whether it's this company or another company, or you have five to choose from, or 500, we also need you to see if, is, are your expectations for what the product will have in the app being met through this statement of work? Because now's the time, again, whatever process we choose moving forward to select, we still wanna also discuss the content as well.
I appreciate that, I agree. So, I think we should study what we want on the app, the content, the scope of work, and get a few more price points provided to us.
Okay. Ms. Knight, or Ms., uh, Ms. Dean?
Um, also, since this is the first presentation of this, I think we need something else to compare services and hosts, which we are going, uh, with private development funds.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, I think so.
Okay.
Did I need to, did I, was that something different? Councilwoman Dean, I just wanna make sure I understood what you were saying.
They just weren't, other options.
Okay. And just to remember about product, product development, because it's part of that hotel motel, anything that is service oriented for the city, which would be, as the mayor mentioned, say, pothole, you know, street light, reporting, that kind of thing, cannot be paid for out of, out of the product development, which is why we would, whomever we would pursue would have to delineate those expenses completely separate from other parts of the scope of work, because they would have to come from totally different funding sources, or, in this case, be pro bono, so.
Well, you know, having had this before, I mean, just to have another company, or, you know, to submit, um, I'd like to see another company as well.
That's fine.
Just to see what you're getting.
As you know. Okay. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep going, just so, so that by the time we come back into the work session, we can do it just budgets. The, a second one is, um, and I'll file in my notes here. Okay. This, this one's from Hillary Zodi, consultancy. And it's, it's item number five. At the last council meeting, we, we talked with Warren, and we looked at his marketing budget. And, for the most part, I think we agreed that that marketing budget, you know, made some sense. Maybe not every one of the items was, was ready for prime time. But, a couple of weeks ago, there was a gentleman who used to be in, in the local newspaper business. And we found him, and we asked them, from a private sector perspective, to, to look at the same idea. In other words, not so much the same ideas, but to sit there and go, we've got a conference center, we've got that, kinda creating a redundancy that said, okay, this is what our people thought. Now, what would an entire separate group of people think? And also, to be able to sit there and go from an a la carte service. So, that means we could still implement all of what Warren wanted, or a piece of what Warren wanted. And we could implement a piece of what this one is, or all of what this one is. And that's where you really have to look at it and, and kinda take them apart. You, you got your general intros in there, very similar to what you, you kinda know on your own. But then, they are breaking down kind of an a la carte service. And, and you could go, and, and we'll just grab one here. Let's say, we're gonna grab the one on, on page, there's no page number to it, unfortunately. Well, let's do this one. Pull-up banners, 48 banners, print-ready rack cards, referral programs, $5,800. So, if you wanted to, to add that to our arsenal, or you want to look at that and kinda see if that's a good idea for you, or the radio spot, for an example, you, you now have a private sector alternative, okay? For what they're gonna deliver, or have the potential to deliver. So, we're not asking for anything on that tonight. We want you to read. We want you to look at it and kinda compare what Warren was doing, what these guys have offered, and, and to start to consider which ones make the sense for you. And then, to have some discussion at that in the near future, once we get past budgets. Because we're gonna have to, at some point, start to implement some marketing, but we're not gonna have very much success. We, we can't expect the guy to, to perform if nobody knows he exists. In other words, we're not gonna give you a marketing budget, then, you know, we're going to lose money. And that's over and above, you know, the number of people that come in and out of that place. So, and, but now you've got a series of options. Public sector and private sector, in-house, and it's a group of three. Tell, tell me a little bit about your group.
So, as the mayor mentioned, the gentleman's name is Joe L. Hall. He used to report locally, worked for a long time in Clayton County. We just sort of noticed that he had been furloughed, and we reached out to him and said, hey, you know, thinking that a person in that position might be able to offer us some marketing implementation at a, at a good rate, COVID rate. And he actually works in conjunction with Hillary Zodi, and I believe there's a third person, which is her husband. And one does content, one does graphic design, and then one does specifically the PR piece. And that's the, the, that's who makes up the consultancy. And so, you know, I just had conversations with him that said, we don't need you to create a marketing strategy, we already have one. Here's the marketing strategy. Pick some pieces out of it, and tell us how much they would cost to implement. Because what we have to accept is that the person that manages the Mora Center can't also be the person that markets it. We're never gonna get off square one, if that's our approach. So, it's just, you know, we just picked somebody that I felt, honestly, had some good connections to Clayton County and good knowledge of Clayton County, because the learning curve can be as much a part of the process as anything else. So, when you've got somebody who's already been here, sometimes you get to skip a step. So, it's just, we just had them, there's no way. I had them put together a proposal that was like a menu. So, it wasn't like this lump sum, this is what we're gonna do. They submitted that first, and I was like, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I need menu items that I can choose, one, all, or none. And so, that's, this is the iteration that you have in front of you.
And that, and that doesn't mean we can't use others.
Sure.
But it just simply says, a whole different set of eyes, that, that doesn't work here. In some cases, we reach similar conclusions. That's good, okay? So, if you're just trying to say, how do we know that's gonna work? We don't. But at least we've had the private sector, as well as ourselves, say something comparable. And then, those things that they came up with that we didn't, you know, it's not like we're, we're trying to steal their ideas so much as we wanna pay them for them. And, will the radio spot work? You know, just like anybody else who does marketing, the answer is, I don't know. You know, you try it. You see if you get any type of feedback. Is there any way to kinda log that? How do you know where everything came from? And if it's successful, obviously, you keep doing it. If it's not successful, you don't feel like you got your money's worth, then maybe that, that marketing medium isn't, isn't for you. So, right now, we can't really say that. We, we don't have a, a track record. We don't have a history. We don't have, we, we, I'm not saying we haven't tried things in the past, but, but certainly, there's no one who can tell us what has worked and what hasn't worked, or in some cases, what we've even done. So, we, we need to know that, you know. What, you know, we're gonna have to, to learn a little bit, a little bit more. So, it's, it's a thought. But, but take a look at it, read it, and we'll, we'll come back with you and kinda say, you know, here's what, you know, here's what I would choose. You know, you can decide for yourself, you know. Example, right now, if we advertise at the airport, there's nobody at the airport. Maybe you don't wanna do that one yet. But, some of the others you might. So, but, but we are gonna have to pull the trigger. I mean, either you market or you don't. But, if, if the answer is, if the answer is that, that the city will market, let's, let's, let's start to give him some, some umbrella. Because you know where he's certainly gonna hold him accountable, is he loses money. And he's gonna look at us and go, yeah, that's your fault. And he won't be totally wrong. So, I wanna give him the ability to do his job. Then, if he fails at it, that's a whole different app. But, but we've got to pick some marketing strategies, and we gotta, and that's what the money's there for.
Yeah, and, and if I may, so the marketing strategy was developed by Warren. We're trying to identify somebody that can help implement pieces of that, little at a time, little at a time, gradually more. And, and sometimes that, that's hard to find companies that can approach it in sort of a piecemeal kinda way. They wanna, you know, they, they, they're artisans, for lack of a better term, and they wanna sell their whole package. And their whole package may be great, but we need, we need bite-sized pieces at first to get, to, to get a gradual up to speed. Because quite honestly, I just don't think we're in a position to afford the whole package yet. We need incremental marketing pieces to get us going. And then, you may decide later to expand it, to choose different companies, whatever.
And Sylvia can, can, can give you the guy's name. Look him up on LinkedIn, Joe Hall. I mean, he, he was at the News Daily here two decades ago. He was able to comprehensively, you know, write coherent sentences. I, I believe the guy graduated from Emory. And he went on and he represented the Milk Association, I believe. But you'll have to read his resume for yourself. He, he's in the real-world marketing. He's not just writing newspapers for the local players anymore. He, he moved up in the world. And, you know, a lot of folks right now are in the furlough process, publicly and privately. The world out there has changed. So, if we can take advantage of that opportunity, Sylvia, if not, you know, that, that works too. But, you know, the, the guy is real talent. And if you have others, you know, step up, let's, let's see what they've got. Okay? Last item, before we get into the agenda, is, and I really-
Before we move on, if I could say quickly, I have a growing concern. I appreciate the ideas. We all want to build trust and transparency with one another and citizens. But, I do have an, an issue where we're presented an idea, and, and the delivery is just one vendor. If we're gonna go that route, then we need to have more conversations, heavier vetting, some examples of work. Or we do what a lot of businesses do. You pick a number of vendors that you choose from, as we normally do. I'm, I'm a little concerned when we're just given one. I, I think it's-
You're not seeing one-
One block a little bit.
Right, but you're not seeing one as a proposal to vote on. You're seeing one as a concept that says, can it be done? Does it fit your needs? And, and in other words, it's an example. So, can the private sector do it? Yes. You know, have we figured it out? Yes. Are there others out there? I'm sure there are. But at least at this stage, before we ask for all kinds of complex issues from a number of private companies, we wanna make sure you're on board with this. Then, we'll give it to the staff, which, let's, let's face it, we don't have all the staff here we're supposed to have yet. So, you know, Sylvia can handle all kinds of things, but I don't have an economic development staff yet. We have a staff of zero, you know? That's the things these people are supposed to be working on. And, and we're, we're gonna get that too, but, so, so- Go ahead.
I think she just muted herself. Say it again. She's muted, right?
No, no, see, I didn't mean that. You were talking to somebody, I don't even know about that.
Okay. So, so, so for a standpoint of just moving forward, obviously, in this case, I hear you. We would ask Sylvia to produce, hopefully through an economic development team and some for the future, some additional opportunities. Is that correct?
You speaking to me or Sylvia?
Uh, collectively.
Well-
I, I mean, I, I'm again, I'm again of the mindset, you know, idea conversations are great, but when you start pulling in information and providing names of vendors, as if there's already a preference, that's what I have an issue with. For the sake of conversation and ideas, we've had several retreats in the past where we flesh out ideas. We haven't had a, a retreat as a council presently, but, you know, the ebb and flow and give and take is a little different than being presented with an idea for the first time, and there's a vendor attached to it in advance.
I see your point.
But just to make sure we're all clear, that as a city manager, I make recommendations to you all, and this is where you say, you want to go with that recommendation or you want other options. I think what I'm hearing the council say is, they want to blossom from my recommendation and expand to other options, and we will do that.
That's fine. It makes logical sense, no problem. But we're definitely moving forward, all right? On Warren's part, I don't know that we can wait forever. On some of these others, we've got a little bit of time, that's true. But I do think, if you want to stay specifically to Warren's idea, or anybody else's for that matter, be prepared for us to put something on the table really soon that you're gonna have to start spending some money on some advertising. It doesn't have to be the whole deal, but we're going to spend some money on something. Pick one. I don't care which one you pick, but doing nothing is not an option. So...
Well, we're already clear on that part.
Okay. Then we're good.
And given that, given that, the time, you know, with how businesses and things are gonna have to re-assess and all of that, I think we're gonna be dealing with a new norm here, and we don't know what it is just yet, so I would move on to side of caution because we've been down this road, Renee and I, already, and, you know, made decisions that we thought were gonna be, you know, you know, financially sound, but right now, that's what the caution is about, you know?
True.
This is not the first time, so that's what it's about.
And we respect that. But technically, we've already made certain decisions, all right? The decision that we're not furloughing everybody in the conference center until, you know, the virus gives away, which means we have a staff over there. We know that costs us money.
Right.
And we have to, I think, once we make that decision, I think we have to stand behind the employee, or the contractor, whatever you want to call him. In other words, he made his pitch. We had a choice at that point to make other decisions, we didn't make those decisions, which means now I think we have a responsibility to back him up. And I'm willing to back him up.
Right.
I don't know what totality that means, but I'm not gonna, you know, I don't want us to sit there and just watch time go off the clock with at least trying something. You know, and you can pick and choose what that means to you. But I think you owe him at least that, if that's the decision you're gonna make, and you've made that decision. All right, unless you want to change your mind. But if you're not gonna change your mind, then look at what is presented to you and pick the one that makes you, you know, you've got a lot of business people here, and pick the one that you think gives you the best return on your investment, you know? If all of this was a guarantee, we wouldn't even be talking about it. We'd be spending the money and just counting the cash. It's market, just like in the regular world. We understand the world has changed.
Right.
So don't advertise at the airport today, you know? But pick. And I mean that with all due respect, is...
Yeah.
I want to, I want to back him up.
Okay.
Because I think, you know, we owe him that. And also because I know myself well enough, when he loses us money, I'm going to be giving him, you know, a harder time, because I don't like that. But we have to be fair, I think. Last item, before we get into that, I know there's not 100% agreement or disagreement on Lake Harbor and Lee Street, but if you look at the last, the third page, if you will, of that sheet, C20, before we have them painted on the ground and the little bollards and everything put up there, that's your engineer sheet, which is basically saying, we're restriping it, that there's gonna be, you know, some of the little bollards that you're seeing right there, it's a little hard to read, but in your PDF, you'd be able to read it a little better. So the little dots in the middle there, those come out of the ground about four feet, and then the ones that are across the railroad track, those are little small ones, like if you're driving in the median, and they're red. And the idea is to make it so it's a whole lot easier to decide where you're supposed to be. And that, to some degree, those people that are coming south on Lee Street understand you've never had a legal right to cross three lanes of traffic, ever. The road stripes right now don't exist, so they think they can drive wherever they want. Well, we're gonna help them reach a conclusion and then enforce it a little better. But right now, you could walk out there, I stood out there with, you know, Kia, you can't tell that, you know? So we're gonna help them out. So that is the strategy in terms of what, you know, we'll implement and get painted. So last chance to have input, and I realize several of you want to close the whole interchange, I get all that. But as far as, you know, this proposal, from a left turn, right turn scenario, you now have it in front of you. Any thoughts, Ms. Raine? Van? Any comments on the third page?
No, Ellen.
Okay. Ms. Knight?
Where?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Ms. Knight, I'm sorry.
Oh, she lost. She's gone.
What's that?
She disconnected.
She disconnected?
Okay. Ms. Dean, I lost Ms. Knight for a second, we'll get her back.
Well, I'm one of those that's on the record for saying, my opinion is to close the street.
Yes, ma'am?
On both sides.
We remember.
Yes, sir.
Well, good.
Other than that, I have nothing to add.
Okay, well.
This one, I don't think much more you can do to this, I'm good with this.
Okay. And did we get Ms. Knight back, or is she...
She got disconnected, she's working to get back on. But what she says is she'll see how, we'll see how it works.
That's true. I mean, so that's, okay, then...
She's back on.
She's back on.
She's back on.
You there, Ms. Knight?
I'm back on now.
Okay.
My comment prior to accidentally disconnecting was, we'll see how painting the street works.
Yes, ma'am, okay. That being said, we're gonna start the normal city council meeting, May 26th. The idea for the work session is to turn it over to Ms. Angela and to continue on with the budgets.
Yay!
Well, we know we got through the fire department and the police department, and I'm gonna let, you know, Ms. Angela pick it up from there. What I can say is, over the last couple of weeks, a tremendous amount of effort has been spent on a budget, Angela, Sylvia, staff, trying to come up with things that make sense. This city's gonna suffer about a million dollar loss in revenue, and that's pretty much a guarantee. So we don't have, you know, lots of fluff as a general rule anyway, so this is not, this is a complicated budget, and it's even more complicated from the standpoint that I don't think we have felt the totality of the fall, and we don't know how long it's going to last, you know? But you can't close your mall, you can't shut down your hotels, you can't shut down your restaurants, and with 80% of your revenue coming from this area, and not have a pretty substantial impact. So as we have opened those back up, you know, we saw statistics, and I assume everybody got those, you know, where your hotels are operating in some cases at 25% to 45% today. So that doesn't tell anybody that you're back, you know? And then for the regular retail, some of those are still closed, you know? I believe AMC's still closed, right? And what about LA Fitness, are they back?
Oh, but not last Friday.
Up recently. And then, you know, the local restaurant folks, you know, they got the ability to come back, but, you know, it's not where it was, right? So...
We wish.
We wish. So again, you know, we have to do everything we can to be, you know, positive with providing them as many opportunities as we can, and then realize that to some degree, you know, we're gonna lose some, you know? Not everybody can stay closed for four or five months, and, you know, expect to still have a business when they're not. And those will have impacts on you. So the harder part was to not only just ask what your department is requesting, but to realize that you lost a pretty large amount of revenue, you know? And to be able to deliver you a budget that was reasonable, in other words, that the math actually works, and that we can live with. So you've got a fairly decent budget that is now presented to you, that, and I don't want me to this, but Angela, it does balance, right?
Yes.
Perfect, okay.
There's that.
So, you know, now the question would be, you're welcome to agree or disagree with several things that are in there, you're welcome to try to change whatever you need, just remember, you know, you've got to make conclusions as to, you know, if I want $50,000 more spending, I have to have $50,000 more money. And we're not gonna be able to just make it up out of thin air. So then tough decisions have to be followed with, you know, changes that are also just as tough. And you're welcome to present those and do it from there, but let's finish the budget presentation and ask the questions as they come about. So, Ms. Angela?
I think since the, well, since, it was two weeks ago, we did the budget on May the 12th, we made some significant changes to the general fund. We've actually gotten the reduced expenditures down from, previously it was around $9 million, we've gotten it down to about $8.6, which is a 22.01% decrease in the budget. And then, again, like you said, even with the kind of the downturn in the revenue or whatever, because I still think some of our revenue numbers are a little bit high, but we'll just have to wait, I think he said, we'll have to wait and see, the occupational taxes, that the city kind of delayed those, people paying those till June the 1st, and you usually bring in about 900, and the budgets, your budget should bring in 900, and what's that number?
What page?
900, I'm on page nine. I'm gonna look at page nine, I'm looking at the revenue. Bring in about 900, the budget to bring in $975,000. And as of last week, we collected $512,000 of that. So we'll know probably by the end of the week, or by Monday or whatever, if these people, these businesses are gonna be able to pay and cover their business taxes, occupational taxes, or, you know? So that'll be very telling, I think. Hopefully, if some of them can't pay by next week, maybe they'll just delay and still try to have their business open and stuff like that, so...
Are you ready to read all of yours? The page that I've got for the...
Yeah, see, the pages have covered most. Can you just, under that...
I know which numbers you're talking about, but not everybody's gonna be able to do that.
Tell me the number you mean.
Oh, okay.
Since I can't read occupational taxes.
Oh, okay, you can't see occupational taxes.
You're looking at page nine, and it's 316100?
Yes, yes, that's the number I was looking at.
We're looking, we're paying attention.
It's because they have the digital copy, but the mayor and council plot up pages that aren't showing the whole.
Okay, all right, okay. See, I think with this document, I think everybody may not be able to see the whole thing, I tried to do this, like, the history, at least all the way back to 2012, or whatever, to try to, like I said, just gauge if what was happening in some of those prior years or whatever, to come up with the budget numbers for this time around. But again, I think the numbers still may just be a little bit too high. But cross our fingers and hope we'll get there by, I should say, by July or something like. I think it'll time it'll tell by July, we can kind of tell, the local office of sales taxes, which is item number 313100, which I've got budgeted for next year, is about 1.8 million, this year we're budgeting 2.1. And you can see how much that one's down as well right now. But overall, I did a spreadsheet, there's a spreadsheet in the budget document that compares the local office of sales tax month to month to the prior year and stuff like that, and you're still, we're still trending down about $42,000. So, you know, because I think that money from the unemployment money that people are getting, that extra $600 a week or whatever, is kind of helping people or whatever significantly. It's probably keeping some people from going back to work. Yeah, a little bit too much or whatever, so... But that is helping to kind of keep the economy stimulated and have people out there spending, so you can kind of see the results of that. Overall, though, the budget with all the funds or whatever, we're down about, I think we're only increasing budget by like 4%, overall with all the funds and everything. And if you want to kind of jump over and get into the, go back to the expenditures, because I'm sure some people are still sitting here, and I don't know if you want to just go in order and kind of start with the city council's budget?
True.
Yeah, you got it. One of the things we changed with that, this is over on page 24, I think one of the things that we added on the personnel services for the city council with workers comp, because we kind of debated whether or not you guys were covered, and you really need to be covered. So that's one of the things we'll make sure that the insurance company addresses this year, is make sure that you all are covered, because you're, you know, if you're here on the property, or you're, you know, out on the trip or something like that, and you get hurt or whatever, you should be covered under that insurance. So that was one of the things that we added to your line item for this year. One of the things too, from previous, the previous budget that we had, we made some changes, there were some things in there, professional services for retreats and things like that, that was taken out. We tried to be very specific with your travel, for the people who are going to the GMA, that's gonna be three of you, everyone wants to go to the GMA conference, it's gonna be hopefully in Savannah this year. Your events, your events was, I think your events line item, which is line item 523800, was reduced from like $31,600 down to $23,100, and which one was taken out, Sylvia?
And remember, you can follow along on page 26 and 27 with the revenue section.
Yeah, yeah. The details of what makes that up. And you still, I guess, still, the health fair will have that, we're still budgeting to have a Freedom Fest, Veterans Day event, Memorial Center events, Marrow Center events, and your 911 events as well.
Well, so that 9/11 is September 11th, and we are hoping to this year have an event sort of like we do Veterans Day, where we, you know, pay tribute to the 9/11 event, and we just budgeted that, the same number we budgeted for Veterans Day. A lot of those events are driven by volunteers and their contributions mostly of food.
And it's 20 years, right? Big news.
Yes, sir.
And then, so then under supplies, oh, and then there was also, there was money in there, something too, for like a land and building rental, which we took out, because that was, that was like, I think it was money that was budgeted to pay for, if you needed to rent the Marrow Center or something.
No, so the Marrow Center events is still in there, because as an enterprise plan, you're the one that advised us that we have to, if the mayor and council use it, they have to pay the Marrow Center.
Oh, that's what I'm hearing, yeah, that's 11,000, okay. There was a separate line item under land and built.
And what we did take out was, we had general liability parked here, remember?
Yes, yeah.
And we moved it to my bunch.
Right, exactly.
So I would like to jump in and ask very quickly, with the events, and I see that the detail, we briefly discussed, but haven't had a fleshed out conversation about growing another diverse cultural opportunity for the city. We have Lunar New Year, we have Day of the Dead, and having the possibility to have an opportunity to have a Black Film Festival, a heritage film festival, something of that nature, where would we have the opportunity to pull those funds from?
So those should be coming from your DMO money. And the reason the Freedom Fest money is in there at $10,000 of 100 is because the state specifically says you cannot use DMO money for fireworks, and so we have to pay for the fireworks out of the general fund.
Okay, so that would come from the DMO budget?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Under supplies, your food was cut by 50%, now the mayor's bringing donuts for free.
No, I bought them.
Oh, you bought them, somebody bought them.
You're gonna get me in trouble. Worse.
And stuff like that.
I worked.
I'm about to deliver Dorothy a dozen donuts.
Okay, and then we added, I added, we added two.
And these next two items, if you're just running that spreadsheet across the top, you realize, you know, the city council's budget changed from $154,000 to $321,000, these next two items are very important to you.
Yeah. So those next two line items are contingency. The first line item, the $100,000, that's to cover any kind of emergencies or something that happens early here, where we need to amend the budget, or, and it can only pretty much be done by you all, so that's why that line item is there, so, whereas very transparent and where you can see it. And then the second line item for contingency is for capital outweigh. Instead of the items being, the capital items being listed on the department's budget right now, we're putting it on the city councils, so that that way, if the time comes to spend it or something like that, they don't need the department, it will have to come back to the city council and get approval from you all to get that money moved to where it needs to be and for it to be spent. But the $100,000 as for capital outweigh, that includes actually just primarily two projects. One of them is for a match for a grant from the fire department is getting, and that match amount is $5,190. And then the other match, the other amount is for $72,000 for road improvements, and that's going to be a grant that you normally get from the Department of Transportation called your LMIG grant. And then that $72,000 grant, and then you have a matching portion for that as well, around $21,000, what did I make it to? It was $22,810. what did I make it to? It was twenty-two thousand, eighteen, to, to match. But you usually have to come up with almost thirty percent of whatever the grant is supposed to be is our portion for that.
And, and that seventy-two thousand is coming in from the state as, as a, as a grant. We're, we're matching the other, but you have to, you have to allocate the expenditure no matter what.
Right, exactly, yeah, and I, I do have an offsetting revenue for, for that in the, in the, in the, under, under revenue for the grant. So any questions about, or any changes you all would like to make to your budget?
I do want to inquire about education and training. I see it's very specific, three people at three ninety-five each, City United Summit, uh per council member for two classes. I have not attended the, the uh, the GMA convention in Savannah, um but I want to make sure that there's still an opportunity for me to make sure that I can go to training uh for the city, for city council work.
And, and the way, the way we probably should have set that up was, was to come up with a dollar value number. And what, what I thought was like, if we went to the GMA conference in Atlanta, we're not spending a night in a hotel. If you go to the GMA conference in Savannah, their annual conference, you probably have to. So if you figured out what that was, plus their registration for the one in Atlanta, there's gonna be a dollar number with it. And then each council member should just simply have a dollar number.
Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll certainly admit that, but just to make sure we're clear, we haven't had the entire council attend either one of those for years. So we did target just sort of a middle number, but we can certainly change that to make sure that should all five want to go, that number is recognized in the motion, we'll make that in there.
So I'll make that change.
I appreciate that, because I want to make sure that we all have the opportunity to um get the training in the manner that is most convenient for what we have going on, you know, with uh Councilwoman Dean is, is retired. So her, her ability to do things may be different than myself, Qua and, and Van.
Okay.
That's right, and, and by just doing a dollar number, I mean, you have to come up with a way to reach it, but that way they can choose where they spend it.
Where you want to spend it, okay, alright, that's fine. So the, the next department is gonna be the city clerk's budget. And the details of her, of that budget on, over on page thirty. And uh this budget pretty much increased about, by about fourteen point, forty percent. Uh some of those changes were uh under personnel, it's gonna be due to um, the, it's due to workers, not workers' comp, due to retirement contributions, we talked about that last time, how that contribution increased from twelve percent up to seventeen percent. And then there were some items that may have been under the city, city council's budget that we kind of maybe shifted here as well.
So yeah, just take a, take a look at that and let us know if you have questions. But uh that, you know, in terms of personnel, that will only account for one person, obviously, so um. Mayor, how do you want to do this? We'll hear from everybody before we move on, or should I just, should we just keep moving till somebody stops suffering?
Yeah.
If, if somebody has a question, don't feel shy. Ask it when you see it, and that way we can keep going.
Before we roll further, let's go back to the council and mayor accent. Because the narrative costs of personnel services from employees' benefits doesn't match. On page twenty-four, it shows seventy thousand, sixty-four dollars, and the narrative is sold.
Oh, yes, yes.
Fifty thousand, nine hundred and ten.
I'll, I'll check on that, and I'll double check that.
Thank you.
Yeah, sixty-three, though. Thank you for that. So any other questions on the clerk's budget or the city council?
What is now actual year-to-date uh amount, Ray John?
What is what, page?
I don't know.
That's up until year-to, year-to-date, that's up to?
Uh that's up to uh, May eighteenth. May, around May eighteenth.
May eighteenth.
May eighteenth, yes, yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
And um for the uh, right, the section, see the third, the full, the year-to-date thirty-five, and the su- trust the number for next year is fifty thousand for the five, five, one, 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 zero, the first one. What kind of salaries, what makes that change?
I guess a change in personnel.
There, we anticipate a change in personnel, so that's not gonna match the current. Will and, and.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
So then we can go to, go on over to page, the city manager, well, the, the next section actually is gonna be um elections, which is on page thirty-nine. Uh although the city doesn't have, I guess, a local election next year in November, but you'll have a general election. And um fifty thousand dollars in there to cover uh interpreters.
Please skip, please skip the city manager, please skip the city.
That's good, yeah. I must have, I guess I did, sorry about that.
But we'll go back to that too. We just, we didn't have money in the elections budget before, but we, we anticipate perhaps looking at interpreters being in the room to help residents. Of course, you know, the law says the resident can choose their own, but should someone need help and they haven't chosen their own, uh we would like to maybe consider having somebody in the room. The county has lists of professionals that they have available for your consideration, but it is at the cost of the, of the city. So we just put in a nominal amount there.
Yeah, and, and it should be noted, if anybody's already voted, you know, that if you went over to city hall today and you voted, um that if you spoke any of the language outside of English, that service was not there for you. You know, so if half of our citizens don't speak the language, you know, then we ought to be able to, at least on an early voting basis, uh because the general election, they might have other choices, right, Haney Elementary, some of the others. But give them the opportunity to be able to understand what it is they're voting on. I think we owe it to them for that.
Um I have a question on that, um we are paying that two thousand to the county?
We would, whoever's conducting the election, I guess.
Well, I, I think we have to pay the translator directly.
Oh, is my, okay.
Yeah, the county's saying, y'all can do it if you want to, we're not obligated to. Here's some people that we could recommend, but it's between you and them.
Okay, that's fine. So independent contract, but they would be allowed in the room, right, as part of their team? So they'll have to sit out in the car?
That's right.
Got it.
And that two thousand is gonna cover how many languages?
Well, we are targeting two additional languages.
Me, he's in Spanish.
That's right.
Are you good with that, Dorothy?
Pardon me?
No, we're just trying to continue the conversation, if, if you're okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go back to the city manager on page thirty-six. So uh, you know, it's pretty.
The one big change for the, those that are picking it up is insurance in general, the four hundred and seventeen item, under purchasing contract. That's put under that line item. At, at some point, that might have to get allocated to whoever's using it, but for right now, that's where you see the big jump.
Yeah, and then there's little changes throughout it, including, you know, any education or training, you know. That's really sort of a luxury, in my position specifically, because there aren't any state laws that regulate it. So, you know, obviously with the bare bones budget, those kinds of things needed to come out. So um the, and to be clear, under supplies, gasoline, five three one, two seven zero, that's not for me, because I have a car allowance, so I wouldn't also get gasoline. But if you remember, we purchased the administrative van, which the mayor and council can use or certain staff, should they be going anywhere, and that gasoline is for that van, not my own, we'll be clear on that. Everything else is pretty self-described, but I can certainly answer questions if you have them.
Any questions? Alright, no, keep going.
I am seeing on the city manager's E-Town salary benefits budget, uh on the car allowance, it's say two hundred and fifty for a month. But the budget for the time is six thousand, five hundred, so where is the number?
There's something else in there. In the car allowance?
On the, on the eight thirty-seven?
Yeah.
The fifth car allowance, it's a car allowance, two hundred and fifty a month, but the total for a month is six thousand, five hundred. That of three thousand.
Right, exactly, because there's something else, because I, I was putting it, I was gonna put it at three thousand, but I realized when looking at the actual, that there's something else in there, if you can look at the actual for um the year-to-date of right now, where the budget's sixty-five hundred, but right now the actual is fifty-two, is five thousand, two hundred and fifty. So I just kept it at sixty-five hundred.
Because I think it's spelled out in the, in the contract, in my contract, so we'll see the number there. But there shouldn't be anything in that budget item but my car. So there may be a discrepancy, but we're not sure which one is correct. Because remember, as we said in the email when you sent out the budget, the, the spreadsheets are what we're focusing on. Are we looking at a narrative part? Like where, or where is Councilwoman Tran seeing the two fifty?
Oh, the current, oh, the two fifty is almost, some, thirty-seven, yeah.
The spreadsheet.
Yeah. Yeah, sure, I just left it at the sixty-five hundred, like it could have been, like, like I said, it was something I maybe I didn't know about.
And I mean, like I said, I'll look at the contract, we won't have to guess on that one. But that should be the only item, however, whatever the value is, that should be the only item in that amount. So good, maybe reduce a little. You'd think I'd know off the bat my head, but I don't. Or something. Anything else?
No, that's it.
I would, I, I bet what it is, is it's that one is a per pay period and one is per month. But we'll check on that either way and make sure.
We've gone over elections. That, on page forty, that joint administration, I spoke about that last time, and we're getting rid of that. It, it shouldn't have existed, as it, it can't stand alone, you can't have a, a department that's not assigned specific to a department. So uh we're not budgeting anything there, and we've allocated all those costs out to someplace else for a moment. Even the capital outlay under that section, I realize, I think, but my, my former predecessor was using it to charge stuff there. He's gonna put it in his loss. So the next department is, of course, the finance department, um that's on page forty-three. Under salaries, I do have a, a, I guess, personnel services and benefits or whatever. Mine increased by twenty-six thousand, eight, and twenty-six, twenty-six, yeah, I'm sorry, twenty-six, by twenty-six point eighty-one percent. And with that, I wanted to try to proposing to the council to, I guess, reorganize the department. And I think have my staff accountant declassified as maybe a county manager, junior. She still needs training, uh but she's been here long enough, she understands the, the, the accounting and what she's doing, she just needs to kind of be taken up to the next level. And then also, um I think it was, I must have had like my, uh, what, an administrative assistant was assigned to me. But I, we're gonna specifically call that position, I'd like to call it the county's payable clerk instead. But they not only will be processing bills, they'll be doing other things as well, because there is a lot of stuff that um I think I've got one person trying to do. And that, that work really needs to kind of be delegated out to, to more than one person. And also we need to have some cross-training, because if something happened to the staff accountant, somebody else needs to be able to process payroll. You can't just really be relying on just one person to do everything.
And if you remember in earlier discussions with the mayor and council, we wanted to see more oversight and auditing of the sanitation process as well.
Right, exactly. And so I would have that person, have the payable person too, and have them overlook, look, look at that bill and review it and reckon, make sure that this reconciled, that we're not paying the customers that aren't receiving service and things like that.
And another thing, when we think about the new software that we've also discussed, whereas now, the front desk prepares one deposit, if we have an online payment, the finance department is gonna have to audit every single transaction. So it goes from being one bulk thing that other people are touching first to multiple transactions. So they don't just have to count the, the bag from the front, they'll have to count a hundred people a day, or whatever the transaction number goes up. So the transactions go up for the finance department with the new software, not down, I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, automation does not reduce the amount of work that, I mean, it's, automation is convenient for the user and stuff like that, we get our money in quicker, we don't, we're not dealing with bounced checks and all this over, and overgraps and all that kind of stuff. But internally, it's still been cut down on the work, because it makes it a little bit more difficult, because you've got more transactions going in, into hitting the bank statement or whatever, that makes it a little bit.
Reallocated the sanitation person in its time to fit this kind of scenario.
Well, and again, that, obviously, those decisions are for the mayor and council, but I would caution us, because we kept the sanitation person to really handle a lot of the customer service, all the calls, all the complaints. Uh and we, we were deliberate in trying to get somebody who spoke multiple languages, so that would be helpful. Um so if we rolled that person into this position, then I, I don't foresee that, that we would be able to handle that and still maintain the customer service.
Yeah, you could, you could have somebody trying to process payments, writing checks, and answering the telephone, trying to wait on people, that's like a disaster waiting to happen.
Just, you, just. So and I, and what I imagine you might say is we could roll it to the front desk, uh and then the customer service piece is there, but you know.
But right now, the sanitation part, though, is that's in a separate fund, that's being funded from.
But we talked about, we could, we could identify what percentage of their time and book it to that. But, you know, I think it would be unfair not to hear from Essie on, especially on court days, which could graduate from nine to as many as fifteen days a month. I mean, how, how do we manage that and the sanitation, customer service? Because I know, and I heard loud and clear when the council began this January, that customer service was, you felt lacking. And so I feel like we'd be going in the wrong direction if we tried to join too many positions together with so many transactions and points of contact.
I am going to add something.
Yeah?
Because I was there during the time when we have one CFO and two staff accountants. And uh so we run, we also have one staff accountant, the grand manager of spending fees. And also the accounting service or accounting technical or any other program, like finance. And when the, that's why choosing the contractor is, is important, because when the con, when the contractor, the truck contractor then the, the is a manageable. And later on, I, at some point, they tend to end, starting to pay off as well. So if we got more than we're capable, we have a good um help, accounting background or skill set or knowledge, whatever the combination words we can get, it would be a bigger job. I'm just saying it from the personal experience from what I was, what it was when I was there.
Say, say that again now?
Yeah, she, Ben was breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, she was kind of breaking up a little bit.
I'm sorry, what, what part of you, I, I, I got lost on that one.
Run it from the top van.
For some reason tonight, my internet is kind of a little bit imminent.
Run it from the top van.
Okay, whatever that, I was there back in the time when, where we have one CFO and two staff accountants. And also the, the one staff accountant was also, um, managed semi-page and did accounting, account payable, management facilities, and at some point processing payroll. And therefore, do it if we can get the, if the sanitation contract is reliable.
Well, it was a bank.
That's about like forty, fifty, forty, fifty, um, forty, fifty, um, issue a day.
But at that time.
And we have also very little good time, like I would say, for the good about, so here.
Yes, but business licenses, property tax was held by an additional person in finance that we no longer have. So we had three people under the CFO, one, and that person who did both business license and fi, and, uh, property tax has since been gone, and those functions have been rolled into the front desk. So now, now I would worry about the disproportionate amount, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do it, the mayor and council tell us to. But again, I felt like, you know, we heard loud and clear that you felt that the customer service was lacking and that you wanted to start making more personal contact with delinquent taxpayers and all those kinds of things. And at some point, there's just not gonna be, and two people aren't gonna be enough to do business license, property tax, making phone calls, all the court stuff, and then just the normal day-to-day business, in my opinion. Uh, and I think, uh, the court administrator would agree with you. But, so I just want to make sure we understand is that, at that time, there were actually three people under finance because one handled business license and property tax. And that's not in finance anymore.
Other, other questions?
I'll answer those questions.
And then I think the other thing with my budget is, a lot of, some of the general items that were under general administration, I moved under mine for now, like the water, paying the water bill, the electricity bill and all about. I just stuck that, just stuck that under my budget as well, so.
And I would like to say that what we anticipate for next year's budget, that the time constraints wouldn't allow us to do this time, is really looking at how many square feet belong to each department and how do we calculate the, the cost share of those, like natural gas bills, water and sewer, so that we can disperse it back out and it won't all be sitting in one department.
And then I did travel that out of my budget, but I will come back and ask for it during the year. So just try to keep the budget lean right now. Something pops up regarding a gas detriment or something like that, that you need to comply with. But hopefully, I think they delayed some of those because of the COVID. Because one of the main ones, the council, or the city actually itself, is gonna have to adopt with dealing with all those leases. And, um, I guess that that one's gonna be very detailed, because it's not just doing the, our leases that we're releasing equipment, it's gonna be looking at contracts and stuff, we're releasing our property and our land or whatever else too. And all that has to be addressed and put in the notes of the, of, of the financial statements going forward. But I think the gas fee has delayed that from us having implemented that by June thirty, but did here, hopefully. So, uh, plus people, it's, it's so, it's a little bit more complicated than they thought, so. Any questions about my budget?
No further questions.
And, and certainly, council, I mean, obviously, you may develop questions after tonight, and that, just let us know. We don't expect you to come up with all of your thoughts right now. We're just trying to entertain the ones that come up naturally, as we call them. So on to the le, uh, to the law, uh, you'll notice a, a cut in those expenses, which I would primarily, um, contribute to, or rather attribute to, um, in, in previous years, the legal counsel attended every single council meeting. And that is not how we're going to use our legal fees moving forward. I suspect we'll be using them, um, more narrowly and, and under specific circumstances. So that's why you saw the dramatic decrease in that law budget. And if there aren't any questions, we'll move on.
Oh, IT.
IT, uh, page fifty. I mean, V, you're here, I mean, I don't know if you wanna, if you wanna come up and, and talk about your budget. Um, we, you know, a lot of what you see in, in Boone's budget has to do with, you know, contracts and licenses. Um, you know, I don't know, V, if you want to point out anything, um, that, you know, is, and you can hear what I'm saying, like, that we could negotiate. Say, for example, a website design. Perhaps the council doesn't want to do a website redesign, okay? Then that might be something we could consider taking out. However, um, you know, we would say that whether you want to go with a brand implementation approach or just, you know, revamping it, cleaning it up, you know, there, that just needs to be a council decision, whether you guys want to promote any website design. So, uh, someone might ask me, well, why can't we take website design out of DMO services? Well, remember, the only parts of your website that can come out of your hotel motel tax are those that are specific to marketing. And so you put all your council agendas and your, you know, your scheduling for sanitation, all that cannot be taken out of hotel motel tax. So, um, you know, just, that's a number that you might want to think about and ask about. Uh, but V, if you want to say anything, now's your time.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, basically, my budget is pretty straightforward. It's just more like maintenance costs for the computer replacement. Um, but, I mean, I can go line by line. We, um, let's say, the, the. The communication, I mean, it, it's just like it's more increased because now we are more like, uh, work from remotely or, um, stuff like this, um, uh, video conference, um, Dropbox, communication, um, like digital file for uploading and downloading. And then in the future, I mean, we, a lot of stuff online now is more, uh, digital in, in, in a bigger file. So, um, I'm asking for the, uh, twenty-five, uh, twenty-five hundred more for, to increase the bandwidth for the next year. Um, because right now, we only pay for a hundred fifty just for like business, uh, small business, um, internet. And which is for our scale, I mean, we've been, we've been joining some conservative money and saving costs for, I mean, for like ten, fifteen years, um, to get to many other places. And. And for the, the other costs there, let's see.
But I, if I may, so one thing to consider is, if the council wanted to see a different level of, say, videoing for the council meeting, if what we're doing now isn't working for you, then we would need to build in some costs associated with that and even decide what it is. Um, so, and wasn't there some, um, build, we were talking about better redundancy?
Um, for, okay, uh, for the backup?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Because right now, we, we have the server, um, is, uh, this October, it will be like a five-year contract will be ended. So, um, we need to renew all the costs. Um, I've got a contract here that for five years, uh, which has cost us about seventeen thousand for five years. And that will be including to the cloud. But right now, the option is, everything is backed up into the server of a public works. And then it's just designed, therefore now, we don't have an option to back up to the cloud for redundancy, continuity plan. Um, but in order to, um, have that, we, we, we kind of require that service to be off, um, uploaded, the backup file to into the cloud for the redundancy.
And you said that was that five year was seventeen?
I did want to ask a quick question. Um, we had conversations in the past of the council dealing with, um, the situation that happened in the city of Atlanta and some other smaller cities where their, um, server or their website services were compromised. And we had a brief conversation about insurance at that point in time. Is that something that we did determine? I thought we had a review of insurance with regards to our technical capabilities. Is that something that we still have, we've cut out?
Well, it, it will be to a certain extent, but what we had talked about actually previously was, um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna mutilate the concept, it was, it's cybersecurity, uh, beyond, we do have coverage in our insurance, but we had actually talked about additional cybersecurity, but quite honestly, we just never landed on a solution. So we hope that this is a more economical solution to creating a backup. And so, because as we all know, or maybe some of us more than others, me the least, I, I think what V has explained to me is, when it's backed up on the cloud, if you've got this agreement in place, it's, it's as untouchable as it can be by anything man-made.
Pretty much.
Yes, yeah. So where we don't have physical redundancies with huge machines that are parked here and parked there and parked somewhere else, we back it up on the cloud, and, and we don't do that right now. And so there, if we had, if every bird, building in this city was hit by lightning and we lost everything, we are only going to be able to recover some things. And so we feel, and correct me if I'm wrong, Boone, we feel that this application or contract, or whatever you call it, would back up everything on our computers?
Pretty much, yes. So basically, let's say we, uh, like we mentioned, put an example for like, uh, the, the whole thing blow up. The server over public works in Detroit, and let's say most of the computer here in Detroit as well. So that's, that's where all the data is all gone. But if we back up to the cloud, then of course, we have a back, a copy of the, all of the data that we have in finance, a core server, um, and all of the administrative file will be back up to the cloud. And then we can retrieve that, download, restore that to the computer.
So, and, and I'm playing with.
Two topics to me, one, one is data recovery and one is liability.
We do have cyber coverage, you all did put cyber coverage into our insurance, yes. But I don't want to miscreate the idea that it's enough coverage that you are going to be able to recover things that weren't backed up. So I, I think cybersecurity, I mean, cyber coverage is important, but it's not going to solve all your problems. So the first thing that, well, the immediate thing we need to solve is our redundancy. And so I, I just want to make sure we understand that this is, should not be labeled finance software, uh, in, on page fifty-two in the detail, uh, so we're not confused. This is really, um, a five-year cloud-based, um, redund, uh, backup.
Backup service.
Yeah.
And that is finance software, this is QS something. That was his description. Okay, but I guess what I'm saying is, is the finance software, you know, is. Yeah. So it should be. This is for the QS one software, the current software you have. The maintenance agreement for that, that's what that is.
Well, then, if that's that, then where is the thing I'm talking about?
It's, uh, should be under professional service.
Okay, okay, I see, I'm sorry, I see, I was missing the seventeen thousand number. I'm sorry, council. Does he have any more questions about public, uh, IT for now? Moving on to court.
Good morning, good morning.
Oh, yeah, we have your court. See? It's on memory.
Go to page eighty-seven, pick up public works.
Okay, so on to eighty-seven.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna draw the details of those two departments. Okay.
So in the.
On, on page eighty-six, I was gonna mention, on page eighty-six, since the last budget, under, um, uh, emergency management, I did add twenty thousand dollars, uh, for, for supply for COVID, so that, like, if we continue to buy and stuff, I've got one place where we're gonna get, you get reimbursed for, for. But I just want to have them in one place, versus being scattered throughout, uh, different departments, the budgets and stuff like that. Have one place that you can keep up with it, so.
So on to the public works department, and I know we talked about this, we talked about it during the last budget meeting, where we were going to approach our capital outlays differently than we have in the past, primarily to manage it. Because, you know, as, as we've all said, and we all know, we can make estimations, but we aren't going to know how this is all gonna unfold until it starts to unfold. So putting all of the, um, the major price tag items in a, in a list, a capital outlay list, that isn't necessarily assigned, attached to the budget, by that I mean, it's recognized as something, as things that each department may need, but we would not purchase those without coming back to the council every single time for approval. And that, that's how we're gonna.
Does that, mayor, do you feel that?
It is, and, and the idea behind that is, if, if we had to make offsetting cuts to your budget, you're, you're really gonna start to impact people, because you don't have anything else, right? They're, they're, you cut it down to the point where, you know, we're not moving too much. So we have to manage not only our people, but ultimately, we have to manage the, the resources that are coming in, which is gonna be a little more complicated than it has in the past, where we might have been able to wait six months before somebody told us what hotel motel tax was gonna be or local option sales tax. We're, we're gonna be looking at some monthly updates, you know? When it comes in, we want to know, you know, what fines and forfeitures were as an impact, what, uh, you know, ambulance services are for an impact, what local option sales taxes are for an impact. Because there, there's no guarantee that we won't have to make additional challenges, right? We have to figure it out. If, if the budgets are doing better, in other words, our revenue streams are better, wonderful. But if they're not, you know, I think we've, we've got a solid budget here that, you know, under, under even tough circumstances, should be enough. But we don't know really what's gonna happen probably until September. You know, when, when the government stops supporting those people that are, are currently unemployed and that safety net's taken out from under them, you know, then we're gonna actually know how many people really don't have a job. You know, how many people really aren't going to travel. And, and we don't also know what happens if, if, you know, we get, in other words, it's not that the virus comes back, because the virus never left, you know, but if we end up with a hotspot or something, you know, we got our fingers crossed that, you know, the, the president's obviously said he's not shutting anything back down. You know, hopefully, the governor won't either. And then as a local government, that will be up to you, right? So if you don't see the presidential level or the national level or the state level, you know, if you're shutting your city back down, you know, you're the one who's gonna have control over that when your budgets have a shot. So, you know, we'll know what that means to, so, um, hopefully, we're on the way through working with the problem and not having more knee-jerk reactions to, to what's happening up there. But if you do, then we'll definitely have a budget challenge to go with, so. Everything has a, a price, uh, one way or the other.
And one, one thing in the, uh, public works budget that I would like to specifically point out is under five, two, two, two. is under five, two, 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 three, zero, it's page ninety-three, you'll see a twenty thousand dollar mark for MARTA stop benches, concrete pads, trash receptables and because we had, when the MARTA started to stop within the city of Morrow, one of the things that we wanted to consider was not just, you know, having a place where, you know, if the grass dies and nobody has a place to throw the trash and invariably they pull a shopping cart out and flip it over and sit on it, you know, if we wanted to, as a beautification measure, put in concrete pads with benches. So if that's not something this council wants to look at out of the general fund, we might could talk about where else we come from, but that would be a number that you, I want you, I want to bring your attention to. Because you may not want to do that moving forward. And that would be a twenty thousand dollar reduction in this budget, so just FYI. You may find other.
Would it be possible to use DMO funds and, and do marketing opportunities on the benches and have the staffs ourselves?
Now, we could put in benches that we sell advertising for. Yeah, we could do that. But, you know, I'm sure there's some iterations we could come up with. I just want to pay, I just wanted to draw your attention that if, if we needed to make a cut, that's one of the things we could consider. Now, to your point, Councilwoman Knight, I guess that could be an economic developer role is, is selling that advertising and, and, you know, building up the money before we put in the bench or something like that. Because I don't know that the, the DMO could sell the marketing, but they wouldn't necessarily, I don't know that you get, I don't know, we'd have to look at it. Could it be the whole concrete pad, the bench, the receptacle covered by that advertising? I don't know how much its value is. We'd have to look into that. But, you know, I, I love the idea, of course, but mayor, what are your thoughts?
From a budgeting standpoint, we could leave it in there because, you know, this is a budget that's not going to be just turned loose, right? We're, we're still going to control a lot of your expenditures, you know? They're going to, you know, keep employees paid, health insurance paid, light bill and all that other stuff. But anything that's kind of more incidental, yeah, they're, they're going to get, you know, a green light to come for other types of items. So from Councilwoman Knight's perspective, you know, that might be something that we could actually, you know, get maybe the private sector to fund, you know, where we say, you know, let's just use, you know, Kathy Winn and State Farm. So she might sponsor, you know, one that's close to wherever she's at. You know, if there's an expectation of what it's going to look like and then she can paint a red front, we can. That would just be an example, right? So she would have enough of an expenditure in that where she's not really advertising it at that point, she's creating, you know? And maybe that lasts the life of the stop or some limitation. So that would be more, we're not, somebody's not going out there and truly leasing space on a monthly basis or an annual basis. They're, they're creating a real capital improvement for us and it might have a lifespan of ten years.
And so in effect, you are purchasing a sign that's shaped like a bench, a concrete pad and a trash receptacle. I mean, in effect.
Well, and without creating a limit on it, Jake from State Farm might create some kind of fund for State Farm. As long as it's got a bench and it meets some criteria, why not? Versus very static items that don't add value to it.
Yeah, I, I think what would be important is that, you know, we kind of stay on track with the desire to beautify and maintain the bus stop because they, they are important in the city.
So if I, to be clear, we're leaving it in, understanding that we might develop something going forward, but we don't want to take that.
Well, we, everyone can write it down on your own little book and just make a little note on it, you know? So in the event you come up with something as you're looking at it over the next couple of weeks, I really do think that's an item that we can get the private sector to pay for depending on how we write. Have to be a little creative about it. But, but there's going to be some items in here that you might look at and just say, I really need some funds. Well, there, there's one section right there that's a little bit of money. Let's get through the whole budget, give you a chance to look at it. You know, obviously they'll make some additional verbiage corrections between now and the first time we present it to the public in the middle of June. But, but we're not through the budget yet, so let's, let's just make a note. And I think we can still get the benches and other types of things a different way. But let's, let's just keep going.
Okay, and like I said, with all of the capital improvement plan pulled out of the budget and, and left in sort of a reserve list.
And, and one reason, let me, let me rephrase how that gets. It's no secret that, that I'm not happy with Public Works. It's no secret that I think they let this city down in a tremendous way. I don't have a problem with an additional twenty thousand dollars in their budget because there's so many things that have to be done to improve some of the landscaping and different types of things. They're going to need it, you know? Otherwise, they got to come back to us and say, you know, I can't, I can't maintain your city, I can't clean it up. You don't have to drive very far to see what needs to be done. So these other items are more of your general items that you'd see in your budget every year. I certainly could easily see twenty thousand being spent on just maintaining what you have. Don't worry about doing anything else. When you fail to maintain something that long, it costs you money. And, and that money might be, you know, hiring a couple of seasonal people to, to knock something out in like a specific area, for an example. I'm not ready to pitch this, but let me just throw one of the ideas out there. If, if we ever did get something moving on that property over there at Clay State, you know, then Dorothy, we've got to find a way to move your dart. As an example, I'm not recommending that, I'm just saying at some point, you need something in a department that is actually going to be there. That's not a capital issue, that's a manpower issue, some boards, some woods, some water, whatever. So I think it's at the right department and they're going to need it.
So are there any other questions about public works? Moment. Okay, just a reminder on page ninety-seven, the sanitation department, sanitation will be pulled out to its own fund. I mean, I don't know what you, this is where the law goes, right?
It's going to go in fund, it's going to go back in the enterprise fund where it belongs in fund four, four. Five forty is where it's going to go, yeah.
So this will stay linked and it'll be in a separate enterprise fund, which is a different section. So looking at planning and zoning, of course, this will include your, your one, one employee in that department, the, the payment for the members of the planning and zoning board, how our inspector fees work, if you don't know, you know, they get basically fifty percent of everything we bring in. We amended that from the last version you got because, you know, we certainly don't expect permitting to be at the same pace it was before the pandemic. That's it? If anybody has any questions, let me know. Moving along to economic development, of course, I know the, the mayor, council have had conversations about, you know, this person being brought on, but it will actually, after discussions with Angela and the mayor, we, we have an idea that is allowable under the Georgia law to fund this particular department through the product development. And so that way it doesn't bear upon the general fund, but it gives us the opportunity to still hire a person who's very critical to us and especially now moving forward. So mayor, do you want to say anything specifically?
You know, if you go back to your city charter, you know, your city charter actually has economic development as an apartment. I mean, it's an apartment means you have real people. Otherwise, we would say, I have a police department, but when you call the police department, nobody shows up. I have employees or I don't have anybody in the fire department. So when, when we look at how this city makes money, you know, it, it's not lost on me that, that we don't have a, a person answer the phone that can help facilitate, you know, driving revenue to our, to our city. Yeah, and you can't say city manager. We say city manager, everything, wonderful, you know? But at, at some point, you know, we also can't wait ten years, you know? We've got to have people who pay attention to this every day. In, in the current budget, you had a forty thousand dollar contract with a, a group of people we paid to market the city. Whether I agree with it or not, you know, that contract will come to an end. And, and those dollars, their forty thousand dollars can be, can be used, right? So that frees that, that money up that's currently being spent anyway. You have to decide for yourself whether it was successful, I don't believe that it was. But, but we need that person. It, it says it's a department, you know? As a city council, we hire department people, the department heads. You know, she makes her recommendation, we, we hire departments, you know? We have consciously decided to have nobody in that department. Well, look at all of the issues that you have from an economic development standpoint. If you have nobody, we can't complain too much. We made that decision, right? Well, I want to complain a lot, you know? And I want a warm person who wakes up every day and answers that phone. And they have to have an understanding if they're any good. Let's say you cost us in totality budgets and everything, say seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, and that's for your health insurance and all the other types of things. There would certainly be an expectation if you hired an employee that they have to bring you that balance. That's just a break even, right? You're not going to get that on day one, right? You have no, no pipeline, we don't have anything going on. So you got to give it a little seed money to get. Right now, this economic development fund is, is, just simply because of the economy, is, is we're going to pull it out of basically your hotel motel tax. That may not be considered totally fair because those hotels can look at it and say, well, you're not really advertising me. True, but if this person will do their job, the idea isn't to drive one more dollar sale to Walmart. The idea is to put somebody in that hotel, to put somebody in that restaurant. And those are the, the two criteria, if you had to say, where could you make an additional dollar, the most dollars that come back to the city? Hotels is being one and your restaurants in terms of food, alcohol, different things is number ten. Retail sales at Walmart, you know, might be number eight. Okay, so we don't need them to buy a dress. You know, we need them to eat and we need them to spend the night here. And, and we got to focus on it. And then we have to make it so that ten years from now, unlike what you currently have, we, we have to have it where hopefully the, the resale value of your house is more than you paid for it. You know, that they're, they're leasing spaces for market value, not for six dollars a square foot. So this is a way to pay for it. Normally, I would want it to come out of the general fund. I wouldn't want to rob somebody else to do it. I, I just don't think that the funds are there otherwise. So you have to trade and you say, I don't have it in the general fund. But the money as it might be spent for product development or something like that, I, I think a warm body is going to be able to help. And, and then that person knows he's got to work with Warren. You know, he's got to work with contractors, he's got to work with whoever else in the city to, to promote the city and build things. And whether that's retail or residential, you know, otherwise. So I don't want to call it creative funding and, and I, I can't tell you that I actually like pulling it out of there. But for now, that's, that's what you get. That's my speech.
Okay, Angela, do you have anything to add?
May I, may I ask something for that?
Sure.
That created this, as long as the, Angela is comfortable with it is my comment on that. Because at the end of the day, we want to stay transparent and make sure that what we're doing is something that we can just open the book in this place.
I, I hope so. They're, they're the ones who recommended it to me. I had it in the general fund.
Yes. Well, this is, I, this is me hearing it for the first time and that's my, my opinion or my comment on that, so.
Are you good with the name?
Yes, yeah, I'm fine.
Any other comments?
No comment.
So I'm going to go over to page one oh seven because we already went over the police complicated asset fund last time. So on page one oh seven, you've got the hotel motel special revenue fund, two seventy-five. And again, as we said, the, the budget, I kind of slashed the budget in half because right now, this current year, the budget's one point two million. And with the economy kind of being the way, way that it is with the pandemic, I'm, at, at best, I'm thinking we'll bring in maybe six hundred thousand dollars.
And we, to the mayor's point earlier, I do want to say that we called every hotel, I, I emailed you all just this evening during the meeting, we called every hotel to hear from them, what are your occupancy rates? What are you reporting? Because these are the pieces of information that make it less a guess and more an educated estimate.
I think the only thing that, that's going to help them, which may not, only probably last for a few months or a couple of weeks or something, is in the fall, if the hurricane season is going to be as bad as they say that it's going to be this, this year very active, then you'll have people coming in from Florida and, and South Carolina and from South Georgia, whatever, coming up staying in hotels for weeks at a time. So that would just, that, that would be one thing that could help them, I think, to kind of recoup some of the losses or whatever. But then also that money that we do take in from the hotel motel portion that was distributed, thirty-seven point five percent goes to the DMO. So for next year, that would be two hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. The general fund will get to keep about forty-three point seven five percent, which comes to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And the remaining portion goes to the product development fund, two ninety-five, which is twelve hundred, five hundred dollars.
No, one hundred and twelve thousand.
Huh? I'm, I'm sorry. One hundred twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
And then one of the points on, on that is, you know, we are paying that CAM fee, a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year. Obviously, we've got attorneys, you know, reviewing that as to see how to restructure it, or how to terminate it. We're not there yet, but we've had good discussions. And that one at least looks like it's possible. The, the bond refinancing is beginning to look like it's not. Irrespective of whether it was all done correctly or not, appears not to matter. Once the superior court judge bangs his gavel, whatever you saw is what you got. We don't have to like it, but, you know, that's, that's, that's going to cost us, you know, that decision which was made long before anybody on the council, you know, two thousand fifteen, you're going to live with for another five years and you're going to pay an additional three hundred thousand dollars a year for that difference in interest rate. Just, just take three hundred times five and you just lost one point five million dollars for the equivalent of nothing out of sight of irresponsible, you know, acts by people that are here.
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the things that the government financial offices association out of Chicago and they had a webinar last Monday and it had people from some senators, some congressmen, whatever on there. And the next, I guess, I guess you would call it the stimulus bill that they're working on is to try to give the local governments and the state and local governments some relief when it comes to debt. And they would like to add a bill or have some, include something on that that will allow governments to refinance or do advanced refunding or whatever. So that may help us, that could help us get out of the mess we're in right there. Yeah, because they, they want to add that to, you know, add that to the part of one of the packages that they come out with next time.
One of the few times the federal government might actually be here to help.
Too many say with the interest rates or whatever being as low as they are right now. So that would help.
You know, that way it's not costing the federal government anything.
Right.
And it's, it's fair because let's face it, they're backing up the banks right now, right? So if they're backing up the bank, the bank should come hand in hand and, and give us something in return. And if we could give that money back to the taxpayers, you know, three hundred grand right now would feel really good.
Yeah, because it'll, it'll also try to get rid of, there was some legislation that went into place in two thousand seventeen that, like I said, if you had a bond or whatever and if you tried to refinance it, even if you had a toxic exempt bond initially, if you refinanced it, then it's going to become a taxable bond. So they also want to get rid of that language too, so that, you know, if you refinance it, then it will, you can still get a toxic exempt bond, which helps keep the interest rates down.
And think of that as three hundred thousand dollars in your pocket for doing absolutely nothing. It means a lot.
I find you another donor.
I find you another note of donor, if you can get that.
Good job.
Any kind of trouble, dude, you know.
So, uh, over on page one ten, uh, this is the, uh, Fund, uh, two ninety-five, which is, we're just discussing the, towards the Product Development Fund, and the budget for that is gonna be a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars that, on the revenue, that includes the money that we tran, we're transferring in from, from the Hotel Motel Fund, the one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, and then also this fund has, right now, has a fund balance of a little over five hundred thousand dollars, and that fund balance, which is basically your savings in that account from prior years, that will, will go up, of course, uh, before the end of the fiscal year, and so we're gonna use some of that savings to help offset some of the expenditures in this, uh, next year budget. And as far as expenditures, again, we're budgeting for, uh, on, on personnel and benefits for an economic developer, uh, and then the regular expenditure under here is for communications, that, um, for a thousand dollars, postage and shipping for whatever, and printing and buying for about eleven hundred dollars, I mean, eleven thousand dollars, and then the remaining, uh, one hundred and eight thousand dollars is that nine thousand dollar payment that you made to the South Lake, Camp, or Campy, yeah.
Any questions?
Questions about that?
You go.
Okay, all right, very well. The next one, one page one twelve, it's just basically your SPOS Fund, two thousand and eight SPOS, um, there's not a whole lot going on, you, you're, you're no longer collecting any money in that right now, uh, but we're going to keep this, I guess, not budget anything in here, other than the, I guess, the, the, probably the day fees charges, which is what the convenience fees are, um, until a later date, do you all, I guess, decide on how you wanna spend that money, or what's left in there? Although you did the Gester Creek, you said the Gester Creek project, is that gonna go under SPOS two thousand and three or four, or fourteen?
Depends on which section of Gester Creek you're talking about.
Uh, the one you, you passed today, or it looks like not.
But that's the new, that's two thousand and fourteen.
But the, okay, but the, the earlier one, the two thousand and three or two thousand and four, depending on if you look at the year it was voted on or implemented, um, we can take, uh, we, we wanna make sure that that was done correctly because it does acknowledge, uh, Phase Two, and repairs to Phase Two can be used, SPOS funds can be used to do the repairs, since that original project was on the referendum, and I wanna make sure that the last finance officer booked that appropriately and got it out of the right funds, so, um, yeah.
And we wanna, I mean, there are several projects that were still in that from that time period, so just, let's see what it, let's see what it takes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So then, page one thirteen, is SPOS two thousand and fourteen Capital Project Fund, um, and I think this SPOS should be in, uh, probably September of this year, collecting for it should be, and then you'll be voting on a new SPOS, I believe, in November, the election.
Now, the SPOS is on the ballot now?
SPOS is on the ballot.
Oh, it's now? Oh, okay, all right. You can tell, so, oops.
Well, it is.
But this is one of those that, um, the, the two hundred thousand dollars for finance software is coming out of it, right? Isn't that the one?
Yes, yeah.
So, so again, yeah, and, and not only for our employees, but ultimately for our citizens, you know, because when, when they go out there and they see a fund balance that's just got millions of dollars in it, and they wonder, you know, why isn't that available to you? Because they think like it's their personal checkbook, I got, you know, ten million dollars in my checkbook, I ought to be able to spend it, and you go, you can't, there are limits, you know, so of that ten million dollars, you know, four million dollars of it technically isn't ours, it's a, it's a project specific fund, and that project has to be built. We haven't built them yet, that's our own fault, but we should have, right? So when you see Lee Street, or not Lee Street, but Lake Harvard sidewalks, that's not a general fund deal, it's a SPOS project, and the money has to be spent for that. When you see a trail system, you voted on it, and we have to do it.
Well, I, I just, you know, wanna remind us that things can change that allow you to no longer, because, for example, if you were saying it has to be built, we would also say.
We have two projects that are in play right now that we've just authorized, right?
Right. But I'm just saying, I just don't wanna miscommunicate, like, the, the design that we have for Barton Memorial Park, we don't have to do that because things have changed.
Agreed.
So it allows you, uh, some consideration to reallocate those funds if you can articulate why, but, to your point, if a project was on the referendum, it is your responsibility to execute those projects, unless something has changed that you don't need.
Well, and, and just for a point of order, you know, if, if I take something to you and I say, I'm gonna build a trail for a million dollars, and you vote to let me do that, then I think I'm obligated to build exactly what you told me, rather than sit there and change my mind at some later date, you know, this is what you said.
And that's what I mean, it's not about changing your mind, like, so, for example, if we had funds allocated to spend on, on nine oh one, and we decided to merge those services with the county, we don't have that.
Well, that's correct. Now, that one I agree with.
Right, that's all I mean.
Because we realize that the project we were going to do can't be done anymore.
Right.
And either we come up with a new formula or new idea, or we give the money to the state of Georgia, which we're not going to do.
Right.
And, and there is a law written out there that tells you how to do it, so, but it, it is important, as we're continuing to move forward, you know, where some of these folks would be looking at it, goes, you just spent a million dollars on the trail, how is that more important than me? And you go, it's not, you know, but it's not an either or option, so.
And, and we hope, I mean, I think, I think we hope, certainly as, as the council, but as the staff, we hope that the trail is some, something that somebody wants. I mean, like, uh, me, for example, I love the fact that I have a trail to walk on, so it's not, to your point, it's not one or the other. You're not thinking about me because you bought a trail, but somebody else may not be as excited about the design, you know what I'm saying?
True, but in a, in a budget discussion?
Yeah.
They're gonna, they should.
Well, that's true, that's true.
You know, here's what I've seen you actually do without sitting in me, I've seen you spend a million dollars, at the same time, you're asking me to cut my book, you know, and that, it's just not accurate in terms of how that's being spent. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, and that, so for this year, we're, right now, the only thing budgeted in this one is just going for SPOS two thousand and fourteen, is the two hundred thousand dollars for software, financial software, and then the remaining a hundred thousand dollars I'm just putting contingency for now.
But wasn't that the same contingency from the other side?
No, it's a separate, separate SPOS, yeah, just, because you have to have a balanced budget, you're always having to have a balanced, yeah.
It's sort of in and of itself to SPOS so that you are acknowledging, and it's balances in that light.
Right.
It only exists within the SPOS.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so, so you have two contingencies at a hundred thousand dollars each, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just one is a SPOS contingency.
You've got two in the mayor and council budget.
That's correct, that's correct, but the, the one that's not, uh, the one that was allocated toward LMI G is not the one I'm talking about, so you had a hundred thousand over there, and we have a separate hundred thousand in a SPOS contingency here, is that what we're saying?
So ultimately, isn't that what you were saying, Angela? You said there's three.
Yeah, you have, you have three, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was the rule of three.
It, it is a rule of three, but, but, but one really is revenue in, revenue out for us, doesn't really count. The other two, technically, you can say you have a number allocated there, but you don't have a, a, a tire or a piece of equipment behind it, so think of it as time goes on, that number might make a difference in something as simple as, you know, a squad car tearing up or something like that, and that way you're not, you're not blowing a budget, so, okay. Does, does everybody understand that one? That could get a little complicated if you're not following.
Okay. So then over on page one seventeen, we're looking at the sanitation fund, and right now, I'm asking us for the revenues, just based on the contract, the current contract that we have, I think, once the council decides on which contract we wanna go back, I'm gonna go back and calculate the, the, the revenue for, just based on the fees and things that we're gonna actually collect, or I think we're going to collect, um, for the new contract and stuff like that, so. And, um, this, uh, fund only really has its one, it only has one person, person in it right now, and the person who takes the, um, does the building collections here in the, uh, in the front office here in the building, and then it just has your costs related to your, um, collections and disposal of your track, local track.
Will we use in any additional revenue? I mean, obviously, we, we do commercial private service, so we, we make some number on that that's greater than our expenditure. Was that somewhere else?
It's here.
Was there a number that we're giving back to the general fund related to the, you know, government?
Well, that one, that, that one's going to be, you got savings in there, you probably have savings in there this year, you was talking about the commercial revenues, it's more than, usually more than the expenditures, um, I think I didn't realize that when I first did this one though. Yeah, it's, appears to be more than the, than what you're, what you're spending anyway, but you do have, like, um, each year, you, uh, at least for the past two fiscal years, you have like a, a savings in that, and you have a fund balance in, in the, money left over in the sanitation fund, I think one year it was like roughly ninety thousand dollars, and another year, it was like a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-something thousand dollars, and, uh, this year, um, in this, in this particular budget, we wanna use some of this fun, fun balance, whatever, savings of about fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars, transfer back into the general fund to kind of balance that. But in essence, we can't justify that because it covers the cost of doing accounting work, it covers the cost of auditing, it covers the cost of processing payroll, so. And then, so that's that fund. And then the last fund we have, that's page one twenty-one, it's your Municipal Port Agency Fund, which is a fiduciary fund, uh, this is a fund that the, the city didn't have set up, uh, pre, previously, and basically, all it is, is accounting for the, the, the private fees that we collect, that we have to hold on to until the end of the month, and then the money's just first back either to the state and then back to us for our share of, of, of the general fund. And so all those items are listed under other costs, or the different agencies and the different, uh, categories where the money is, uh, distributed to at the end of, at the end of each month, including us. Any questions?
Mayor, are you sure?
No, um, what I was gonna do is, because that pretty much wraps it up, um, make sure you read it, you know, if, if there's something in there that, that's gonna bother you, this would be the time to CC everyone, um, because you gotta, you gotta rob Peter to pay Paul, right? So if there's something you want, then, then you gotta figure out where to cut it, and of course, you've at least identified at least one spot, you know, maybe more, um, so any, any direct questions to Angela, based on what's been presented? Ms. Trainor?
No, for now. No question.
Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Dean? Dorothy?
No other questions?
That, that pretty much takes it, but let me ask you one question, you know, in, in terms of the existing budget and some of the changes we just made in terms of like the take home car, or, or, did we have a conversation about that?
So, um, you, you can, but just by policy, those are just changes that, that I can implement, but if you, I mean, Callaway's prepared to talk about that, if you wanna discuss it, I ain't just.
We're gonna, um, it's a, it's a budgeting issue, but, but we're gonna put it on the table. You, you saw something come out in terms of, you know, take home cars, you know, the, the current policy was drive it forever, um, you know, maybe that's not the best answer, you know, that we want, um, you know, there, there was a, a proposal that, you know, might create some limits for that, I believe that was a Peachtree City policy of some sort, and we'll, we'll let the chief hold it on the table and see what he wants to say.
Sure, we tweaked Peachtree Cities a, a little bit, um, to where zero to fifteen miles, uh, they could still have their take home cars, and I believe it was fifteen to twenty-five, it was thirty, and, uh, twenty-five to thirty.
To over.
To over, was, uh, fifty every two weeks for the employee contribution. Uh, it seemed to be the, the, kind of the fairest way to look at it and do it, uh, and also, there's other cities that do the same thing, Hayfield's another city that does the same thing, but graduated out based on mileage. It would signal recapture some funding back into the, the city.
Any, any discussion? Comments? Ms. Trainor?
No.
Ms., Ms. Knight?
I think, considering how in previous conversations, um, how important this was as like a recruiting tool for the department, um, you know, the comment driving it to forever, considering that we are currently in a, you know, a tight pandemic budget type context, all of that, you know, the, the opportunity to still have this for the officers, if they're willing to participate, um, I, I think this is, this would be appropriate.
Ms. Dean?
Um, I think, uh, it would be a solution, um, as, um, as the woman, uh, Knight was saying, it was a benefit and, uh, not only to recruits, but, um, you know, it, it promoted the city and it also, you know, when you see, um, a police car in the neighborhood, you know, it kind of deters, um, you know, crime, so that was at that time, you know, a thought, so, uh, given the situation, I agree that, you know, you know, that's, um, chief's plan, I think, um, you'd, uh, you'd hear from it.
Done it this time. Any other questions before we call it a night? Dorothy, look, two minutes before nine thirty.
Woo-hoo!
You can have two.
Goodnight, y'all.
All right, Councilman, your turn.